Second.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
President, who made the first move? Say it.
Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there. Roll call. Jim. Jim. Champ. Tim. Wyatt. Myself here. I will now approve the consent agenda. Start out with the minutes. So questions on that, we'll move on to the financials. We're gonna make it until our next round of money comes in.
Payroll, why do you want to carry us? We took $33,000 from the building fund last month for payroll, and we're sitting at about 270 right now before we got from Pierce County and after I take out what we're paying today.
Close.
Wait, I'm in.
There's nothing there on one of the claims. Is there still some of that gold spill in some of the steam that ruptured city?
Two months' hold, it's two months. It's this month and last month. Still doing way better than we were with Black Hills Energy. I think the seven-month year-over-year person, we've saved $11,400. It's going with this new group that's after all that.
How many months to go? Like already another three months or over the year? Or you've got some time left?
September 1, I think it started fiscal year.
Okay, there's no more questions. I'm just gonna state that we're gonna move from the discussion item number 14 up to number nine. So that you don't have to sit and do all that. Everybody's alright with that. If there's no more questions, I'll adjourn motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Did you say okay, Jim?
I was gonna say, I said, but she wants to say at the same time, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, so first and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Okay, student presentation. C A students.
Yeah.
Oh, there they are. Come on up.
I think they were planning on observing.
Oh, I thought presentation.
But you can sure make a presentation if you like. You're just good with the observation. We give them credit for being here. Cody and Luke, present.
Well, welcome. Try and stay awake, Matthew. Okay, we're now at the portion margin to set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you when that five-minute time period has elapsed. Please remember that this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plainview Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. If anybody would like to comment, raise your hand, and I'll call on you to stand and speak. Go ahead, Brooke, state your name for the record.
Brooke Curtis. I had attempted to play by the rules. I brought the nice sheet and just go offhand here. Followed the board's policy and was still denied access to the regular agenda to have reasonable conversation with my elected representatives in this political system that we still call a representative democracy in the United States. So now you'll get what you wanted, as usual. My original Q and A tag that I requested from the board was gonna be pretty simple. I was gonna ask for some more consistency in dealing with the ridiculous COVID rules and regulations that we all have to deal with, pointing out some common sense, consistency and some accountability. But now that doesn't matter since the board president and superintendent, apparently emboldened by the N A S P's declaration of them as gatekeepers of the agenda, decided they didn't want me to have that conversation with you. So don't worry about responding to anything I'm about to say. Since the agenda items are still so vague, I have to ask what they mean. I've heard that you're talking about masking tonight, but it's not on the agenda, so I don't really have any idea. I'll just talk about some stuff, and hopefully you can catch my opinion on something that matters. None of these comments necessarily have to do anything with each other, but since you can't and won't respond, we'll take them probably for what they're worth. These comments are all intended to discuss the management, planning, and top-level administration of board decisions. It has nothing to do with any employees, has nothing to do with any teachers, has nothing to do with any second-level administration, or any other employees of the school district. During the news interview last Thursday, he intends and hopes the Plainview will be his last position stating this is a destination position for me. Since we're not allowed to discuss things with our board members at the meeting, we're not allowed to be on the agenda, apparently. We're not allowed to follow the rules to be on the agenda. We're not allowed to speak on individual topics as they come up. You tell your friends, constituents, neighbors, tenants, landlords, and all the rest that they have no legal protection for anything said at these meetings. And I just have the opinion that I think that's legal nonsense. You have someone actually willing to come and give their opinion. Perhaps they're already mad, so you know you're going to be yelled at, and shutting them off isn't a way to handle it. Maybe you receive them better, so they don't have an opportunity or a need to get mad in the first place. Board members are not allowed to voice a disagreement after a vote. Board members are not supposed to talk to teachers directly. Everyone is supposed to follow the imaginary chain of command. All superintendent evaluations are private, with no external input or output. There's now an email address for our school board to take constituent comments. I'm sure it's appropriately screened before you get to see it, but I can't be sure because I can't even get a copy of a previously published agenda without the superintendent's permission to be able to do that. To all to avoid phone calls and personal interaction, otherwise it probably wouldn't exist because we all talk like reasonable people, but we can't seem to do that. These interviews were, no, I forget that one, doesn't even matter. I have an opinion about little or no fiscal financial management, other than spending money. We haven't made it a priority to increase our savings one time in 20 years, and yes, I know there's a limit to the amount that you can have. It's roughly the same million dollars that Don Benner put in there for the same money that's there. So instead of fiscal management or management of any kind, we traded all that nonsense for a whole bunch of social media posting. Six-million-dollar budget this school has, and my kids still have to bring their own Kleenexes even before COVID happened, and I don't understand the purpose of that. For years and years, the parents and some cooks, when they come to the meetings, have told you that the kids throw away more and more food. You've had three or four times where parents have come to you and asked for a better solution or a different solution, and you just continue throwing money away, judged perhaps by the amount of teachers that want to eat meals at our school. If they're not willing to take a $3-a-day option, why would the kids want it? I had intended to prove this to you, but upon reviewing the packet and proving the nature of what my comments are all about, the lunch statistics at the bottom of the public and press packet are now gone. I would be interested to know if you guys still have them underneath the line of asterisks in your agenda or not, in your packet. Superintendent was counseled by his legal counsel a number of years ago to have his comments in the public packet if they were to be discussed at the meeting. Happened two or three times after instruction, now they've been removed for more than a year. Having two different packets is not okay with the state law and not okay with the way the Open Meetings Act reads. Since you brought in $1,000 to spend on somebody from a club that you belong to to give you bad advice, I thought I'd give you some of mine for free. Since you all, in one form or another, at one point have asked my advice on school issues, and rather with perhaps exception for tonight, no one has ever acted on anything that wasn't going to be acted on anyway. Every year, superintendent contacts me and says someone doesn't believe he's talking to the press or communicating effectively. I never actually get to address the board, and no board members even want to talk to me, even though the conversation is always directed at my office, usually to the point of where I'm being blamed for whatever's been put in his review by you people, that it's my fault that he's not communicating with the press or something along those lines. Communication is poor, but when I have a problem, I ask. It's called conversation, something the board doesn't want to do. So I would urge you, in my last 30 seconds of my own five-minute imposed method, I'll give you a copy of this, you can read through my last things. If you want to do something for real, take a look at our opt-out numbers, which in 2015 were 14, and in 2018 were 37. Take a look at our rising cost per student. Take a look at more and more free and reduced lunch. Take a look at some administrators being able to look for other jobs working for us or the country. Take a look at nine music teachers in eight years. Take a look at a band that was 15 and now 15, choir that was now 40 with a swing choir and now eight, and told we can't have a swing choir anymore, even though my daughter waited for it for four or five years to make sure she could be a part of her school. The perfect example of my point is our COVID rules. Hit in early 2020, we finished here in panic. When all summer without an announced plan, head close for three weeks ahead of the school, delayed. We created rules which were back-to-school plan, which pretty much got ignored since nobody knew about the mask mandate on the green level for all the teachers. We didn't like the rules, we didn't want to follow the color scheme for the county. We attempted to use those rules, tried to go to orange, and the board voted down, moved us back. We voted to have rules, mandatory masks and local colors. The director, the activities director, follows all the rules. 15 minutes within six feet of people, or whatever the caffeinated rule is supposed to be. We let kids slather all over each other during sports, but we don't have the guts to let them shake hands after the event is over. All of these things are recommendations, we've created our own rules. We've preempted discussion about rules by having votes on things that nobody asked about, and then one month later voted to remove the rule. We have ambiguous agenda items about what everybody seems to think is masks and never really is unless it comes up. You've only got two months left, so you better figure something out. When my daughter was quarantined, the fellow student's date of calculation was Tuesday, March 30. The last calculated day of exposure was April's 1. Didn't realize the sickness until April 6, where I was home, instructed to stay home on April 7, and using Thursday as last calculation, her 10 days ended today, Monday, April 12. In the meantime, this is not your fault, I never received a call from the N C D H D. I did, however, receive three different communications about the day she could return to school: today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, all from three different people. She came back to school today with no questions asked, so I don't know who I can believe. Other parents were not contacted until their child arrived at school that next morning, which I know sent one girl home crying, even though it's not the person's fault that had to let her know that, that she couldn't come to school today. With the rules that you've got, earlier in the year, my son would have not been able to come to school, but he came to school anyway, and nobody said anything about it, which I'm thankful for, that's great. He wears a mask all the time because there's another kid in his class that wears a mask. So I said to the authorities, I said, "Well, when my daughter comes back to school, she doesn't want to miss district music, she's going to be wearing masks for the rest of the year, no matter what." And I was told that it pretty much didn't matter because the rules now say, it doesn't matter if you have a mask on or not, you either have to isolate, quarantine if you're next to somebody that has been confirmed to be sick. You have all those nice little charts in your packet this month, I have no doubt, because it may be preemptively helping with the situation. But all the trouble you went to about masks, all the voting, all the yelling, all the fighting, all the parents coming and telling, all these things, don't matter because if you're sick, you have to go home. I also received a phone call over the last couple of days about some music concerts, or recitals, as was also not mentioned. Was given three dates, two for my daughter, one for my son. Monday for band, Wednesday for choir, Thursday for 5th to 8th. Today, my daughter was told that actually her other program was on Thursday for choir, and which apparently runs up against right next to the 5th through 8th. With all the excess and random nature of the school's social media, I think something would align at some point. We have a very ambiguous, hyperbald, never-determinable administrative lead at the moment. If you always keep things vague and hide the ball, you hide the information, so you just make it up as you go, sliding the rules around to the best suit your situation, attempting to constantly, apparently dodge lawsuits that will never exist, or just the fear of them, and never actually delegating anything out, trusting your personnel while constantly hearing complaints of being micromanaged. You can turn the ship around, you can save the students, save the teachers, save the members, maybe even perhaps save something outside these walls for our community. It's very discouraging for me, as an alumni, and a former student, and a former athlete, and a former activity person, and now a business owner in my community, to have to constantly stick up for my school, to the other people that go here and the 37 people that opt out. Very discouraging to have to do that. We seem to waffle and focus on the wrong thing at the wrong time, maybe a distraction-style whack-a-mole for mindless cheerleaders or rubber stamping zombies that aren't ever given the entire story to make decisions off of. Find some consistency, find some accountability, find some better ways of communicating, and do make it a great time to be a Plainview pirate so all the kids, parents, and community can stop whirling their eyes when they hear that. Thanks for letting me know longer. Had food or music.
I would say we never break the rules for you, but.
Good one, Mike. You got me. That's what I tell my kids.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Ben, would you like us for me?
Alright. Thank you for that. We'll move on to actually number 14, the school nutrition discussion items.
Okay, I invited Linda to be here because we, as you know, as part of the summer school plan, or to make it a really kind of a, bit of a true summer school, a more robust one. We want to feed those kids. In fact, we want to feed them two meals for those that were inviting and those, you know, parents that accept the invitation. So I just, I wanted Linda to be here to hear the discussion, participate in it if necessary. It's really probably gonna be, you know, a pretty simple plan. 16 days in June, a breakfast meal served at 8 o'clock. Not hot every day, but they're not hot every day now. A reimbursable breakfast meal, and then a bagged lunch to go. A reimbursable bagged lunch to go, so similar to what we delivered last spring. But they would be to-go meals, so her help, her and her help would be done when those bags are done and in the fridge, most days. So, you know, I wanted Linda to be here for that. The waiver for the summer food service program has continued to be extended through the summer. Whether they'll continue into next school year remains to be seen, but all meals are still free to families. The school district has reimbursed a full, reimbursable amount. So that's, whether, you know, I know Linda's been thinking about it, and whether it's gonna be a two-staff process or a three-staff process probably depends on our numbers, which I would expect to be anywhere between maybe 60 and 80, that we hope to have for summer school. 60 would probably be more than we generally serve at breakfast time, so it would be probably a busier breakfast than we currently serve. So I wanted her to make sure she was here for any conversation or questions that we might have with regard to that part of our summer school plan.
So during your summer school, you're gonna offer breakfast for anybody in the community?
Well, that, we hadn't thought that we would do that just because of the potential inconsistency, so we don't intend to do what we did last spring, certainly, which was deliver two meals per day. I hadn't thought that we would continue with food either to be picked up or for them to come in and eat. I hadn't put together a plan on that, for that, just because I wanted to focus on serving the kids that we'll have for summer school.
A little bit of side note on meals. I know we've gotten some emails from some parents, and I know this happens all the time too, about the meals. I wonder, and I know it's been shut down a little bit because of COVID, but I'm just wondering if plans are to make them, make it different, you know, the meal life, what's offered and available and stuff for next year going into school year, I guess. Like I say, I know COVID limits some stuff.
Yeah, yeah. The big, I think a pretty significant detriment is the self-serve salad bar, which is pretty popular with our kids, and supplements, a lot of kids, supplements their meal quite a bit. And we're still not, you know, we're not prepared to reinstitute the salad bar in this school year. We expect that we'll be good to go in August. I think that'll make a pretty significant difference. Linda, would you be able to speak at all to your commodities? And have you noticed any difference in your commodities? For example, today, did the, did your entree come from commodities that we had today? You know, something that I noticed, and I didn't share this with you, but something that I noticed, my observation is that the, and it was a breaded, was it pork?
Breaded beef steak.
Breaded beef steak. The portion size of it seems smaller to me than what?
The breaded beef is smaller. I know the breaded pork, this is one of the smallest, I mean, as far as steak-wise. Actually, the commodity quality is almost better than I can buy because it doesn't have as much grease, and so I do get most of my meat from the commodity, like the chicken, things like that.
It just, you know, struck my mind that I wonder if, you know, the powers that be have said, "Well, you know, we've got a waiver across the country. Nobody's paying for meals." And so now your, the size of your beef steak today, your breaded beef steak, seemed to be a smaller portion size. You know, so that definitely caught my attention. It'd be something that would be somewhat out of our, you know, control if we're giving quite a bit of our, of our food through commodities.
So if you offered one and a half beef sticks, they would charge, I mean, would have to charge them, or could we charge that to our commodity program?
They'd just have to ask for a second entree, which, and I did ask, you know, what, how many second entrees are being requested by our kids? And, you know, it's anywhere from, you know, 150 to 350 a month. And we've encouraged our families to do that, you know, for, you know, our population of kids, particularly stereotypically high school boys that are looking for larger portion sizes, you know, just, you know, get a second entree. I think it's 70 pounds. So it's a pretty nominal amount, but, you know, that's always an option, you know, for kids.
One of the questions I had was if, when they were upper elementary parents, was if the boys in 4th, 5th, and 6th could buy a second entree. It's not available right now, is it? Some of these boys, especially if you're talking smaller portion sizes, maybe that's the reason why I've gotten some questions anyways. You know, they, and I know, they said, I think, are the portion sizes the same for a kindergartner as they is for a sixth grader? Is that right, Linda?
Like in the bread, it's, then the steaks, the chicken.
Chicken nuggets and that kind of thing. They all get the same.
Chicken nuggets, we go up with amount.
Yeah.
You know, the smaller ones get like five, and then it's up to like four ounces of meat when they give that.
Yeah.
And usually chicken, like chicken nuggets, some of the breaded stuff that we don't have a bun with, I try and serve like a dinner roll, or I know they do a lot of chips and things like, but we can count the, the whole deal of chips as a grain, so we've been doing some of that, some of the goldfish, something like that that goes with it, so they have something.
But that was a request from some of the parents that I talked to, was if they do, those upper elementary boys, if they can buy a second entree, like a little more filled up.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about the history of that decision, Linda. I don't know if you could speak to that, if there's the rationale for 4th, 5th, and 6th not having the option of a second entree.
That I don't know. I guess we never have done it, but I don't know.
There wouldn't be any reason why we couldn't then.
Yeah.
I would, I would be curious to know why, you know, why we don't, why that decision was made, just to be, you know, consider that, if we want to give that option to those kids. They, the salad bar is new when you become a fourth grader. Haven't had it all year. They look forward to that, that's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, that was a request too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I try and give, right now, is, we're, we dump more, we have that full line full of like fruits and vegetables that they can grab, they grab their own now. We're used to just have to serve it to them, they couldn't touch it, couldn't get close to it. But now we have like the fruits and vegetables all along that line, that they can also have.
And I know kids that age, anyway, if you give them the option of buying, getting an extra six chicken nuggets, anyway, I know what's gonna get left on the tray too. They aren't gonna eat those fruits and vegetables that you want them to be eating either. I can understand that, maybe that's some of the rationale too.
Yeah, I suppose that could be. You know, and I make up, you know, somewhat frequent observations too, and, you know, kids are, kids are fickle, finicky. It'd be a nice luxury to be able to offer two entrees. That's not something that's insurmountable, it would take some work, could be done. If we want to, you know, give kids just more options so there's more of what they will eat, less waste, you know, as we, some days, depending upon what's being cooked, you know, the apples are cored, so they get slices, kids eat apple slices, they don't like to eat a full apple. You know, so, you know, we're, you know, trying to think of those things. I make observations and visit with Linda, and she's, you know, been working in that kitchen and working with kids, you know, so many years, but, you know, I think when, you know, when the salad bar opens back up, and if we look at, you know, second, second entree for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders, I don't know, Linda, if in our history, how it's ever been discussed to maybe try to offer two entrees and manage that. It would be kind of tough to purchase, for her to make purchases and to plan. It'd take a while to kind of know what the kids like and what, you know, if, you know, these are two entrees, and you kind of keep them together, and you know, okay, on these days, this is the two entrees that go together, and we generally know, you know, we got 60% of that one, 40% of that, but you could potentially have more waste if you start trying to prepare two entrees and manage that.
Yep, I understand.
We did it before this started, we did go to like a ham and cheese sandwich as an extra, and then they would order that if they didn't like what we had. So they could have that as the entree rather than whatever they didn't, you know, they didn't like.
We've had to take that away because of COVID, is what you're saying, yeah.
There was just too much to do, and it was just too much to figure out.
What about ketchup, salt, and pepper? There were questions about that too. We've had to take that away, is that right?
Salt and pepper shakers are at the end of the line?
They're at the end of the line, okay.
Ketchup is in packets.
In packets only.
Instead of their, the pumps that they use to have. We have it there, I mean, we give them, and if they want more, they can surely, I mean, ask, if they want more ketchup, they can have more ketchup. You know, you don't want to give like five packets and then they throw three away.
Yeah.
And ranch, we've been serving ranch with vegetables now, which kind of helps, and carrots.
I would say, yeah. Okay.
Pizza, they like ranch pizza.
So do you have to put every other plate just because it's law? I mean, if a kid doesn't want his apple or vegetables, do you have to give it to him anyway?
They have to have either half a cup of fruit or a half a cup of vegetable to count it as a reimbursable meal. So somewhere along that line, they don't have to take what we have. They'll take the main entree, but they have to take an apple, or they have to take a cup of fruit or something. They don't even have to take the vegetable we have. But in order to count that as a meal, it has to have a half a cup of fruit or vegetable as a meal, and then your grains.
They have some choice though, it's not just give it to them.
Is there a range of calories that you're trying to, a target range?
There is. The state, the state looks at that when they come look at my votes, but they have never really said anything as far as calories. I know there is a, you know, like a range I have stated, but I don't usually pay too much attention to that.
Okay, anyone else have any? It's like I heard a couple instances where kids didn't get an entree. I don't know if that's true or not, but, or maybe you guys had to scramble and make something?
There, well, we get numbers, and sometimes our numbers are not right, and I kind of know, you know, the days that they like. They've never not had an entree. I mean, yeah, we might have to cook it in the microwave, and there might be two or three of them. They might have to wait five minutes to get it. But that would be on a day where they give you like a number from, you know, like high, usually in high school. And then maybe somebody decides they want to eat, you know, and they're not in that number. So then, yeah, I try and kind of figure out, but, just not very often, but usually have more than what I need. I try to anyway. I try to anyway. But they have never gone without.
Just, it might be, it could be something different than everybody else's entree or it could have been a delayed microwave instead of flame boil.
Right, right. It'd be different microwave.
Do you have any, any questions or comments about summer school?
Not really. I, I've got help now that I've decided to, to pay the work. So I don't know. I don't know if you're planning in-house breakfast or you're doing a to-go, I mean, I put that down the roadways.
No, the breakfast will be served in-house. I mean.
Okay.
And then lunch to go.
Well, we appreciate you doing that for the summer and that's good for the kids. Thank you. Chair number ten, board development. Help number nine, I guess, review policy, five oh six oh one, five oh six.
Yeah, I think we just have on your five oh six oh one for activity eligibility. There's just a tweak to the eligibility time period, which seems to maybe make a little more sense. So our students who for whatever reason might be ineligible, it would be from Monday morning through Saturday night. So it would be just, you know, that calendar week. We used to be a Tuesday morning through the next Monday. So that's your fourth paragraph down, last sentence. So we'll probably change that to Monday morning. And we could leave it to Monday morning, Monday morning, Monday morning would be, would be appropriate. And then Mr. Schmidt, was there anything else on five oh six oh one? That, it's all, everything else is appropriate? Reasonable, I think. Do you have any, any questions on five oh six oh one?
Five oh six one oh is fine then.
Five oh six one oh, yes, that's a guide prescribed by the NSAAA. So five oh six ten would only change if the bylaws of the NSAAA changed. So five oh six ten is, is good to go.
Okay, now number ten, board development.
And I think Deb is off to Carney this week.
Yes, tomorrow.
So she will be able to report back. And it'll be some repetitive from the tantalizing webinars of earlier in the spring. But, but yeah, it's always, always good to have fresh information or reminders. So, so that will be, that will be good for, for Deb on Wednesday. And then, you know, like, you know, the board, you know, can, you know, determine whether you want board development to be any kind of standing item in the discussion items section. You know, it seems, you know, to me that that's probably something appropriate to, you know, stay on top of or have a particular topic to, you know, every month or for a couple of months. Whether it's about, you know, anything that might have been in the new board member web packet series or fundamentals of board service that comes from NASB, which, which, you know, helps, obviously helps folks who are your community members to know and understand best practice for school boards. And I suppose Deb will bring some more of that, that information home, you know, for, for next month. And, you know, as you're talking maybe with other board members, Deb, maybe that would be a good question for some of them to see if they have routine board development discussion or, you know, topics that they read and then visit about in, in open session.
I don't know what the rest of you think, but we can take that book and just, every meeting have, it was kind of like our policy book. Have a section in there that we looked at ahead of time and just have a short discussion on what it means or how it affects us or doesn't affect us or whatever. Just kind of go through the books, page by page. Or there's probably some sections that maybe don't really pertain to us, maybe for bigger schools or whatever that we could skip over. If you guys would like, we could just add that to our.
I think that's helpful for me as a new board member, just to discuss with you guys what works and what is appropriate for our school size and.
If somebody has something, a topic they would like to have, maybe skip over five or six or whatever and jump to something else that might be, you know, pertinent to what we're handling at the time, you know, just make that recommendation and we'll, we'll go to that. Just ask. Otherwise, we'll just kind of go through it, so.
Just as long as we know what it is ahead of time, then we can.
Yeah, come out the packet with.
Questions or something, bring it up and talk about it.
And maybe even a month prior, you know, rather than it comes out in the packet and this is what it's, this is, you know, page, you know, read this section, you know, that found on page fifty-three to fifty-eight, you know. If, if we knew, you know, the, the prior meeting, so for next month, we're going to look at, you know, community engagement. A section on community engagement. So that gives you a little more time than maybe from Thursday when you receive your packet to Monday, but.
We can have that discussion at the meeting, what we're going to do for next month. We've got our books in front of us. We can look at what's coming up and say, okay, we want to look at that or we don't want to look at that. And decide right at the meeting from previous month, you know, kind of one evening going to, you wouldn't have to worry about it on the agenda other than to have the time. We'll see how it works out when we get started. We'll get started. We'll put some in the agenda for next month to read ahead of time. We don't have to say our books here anyway, I wrote that down. Okay, building grounds committee.
So this may bleed into section twelve then as well, or item twelve on your S R two funds. Because there are some items that building grounds is considering that would be considered maybe allowable expenses with our S R two money or our S R three money, which by next month at this time, we'll be close to know, to get the confirmation of what that amount's going to be. But Dr. Thor and Mike and Tim have had a few meetings in the past month or so to discuss some things. And so, Jen, let you lead the discussion and the questions and try to provide answers.
What's up? You had a list in here, didn't you, of all the projects?
Yes, well, I sent you, I sent you that email. That's your, yeah, that's your S R two for item twelve, but.
She had emailed you that?
I can, I can bring that email up. Or Tim, is that just what you shared?
That's what I just printed.
So what we're looking at and talking about is the track, resurfacing the track. I'll just go through everything first and then we can go back and discuss each one. Resurfacing the track, the lights are not, right now for the football field are on the inside of the track and they're right next to lane one. So if a runner steps, gets bumped or trips or whatever, at that point, he's going to run right in that hole because it's right there. So we're talking about moving them to the outside of the track, outside the fence. Our tanning wall, which we've been talking about out here for years, and the ramp, handicap ramp coming up some sort from that side. We're talking about possibly moving our garage. We've got the garage down there for our Suburbans and our vans. And we have Gail's pickup and skid loader are in our wood shop room right now. And we kind of need that space in the wood shop room, so we need to get that moved out of there. So we're throwing around the idea of putting a six car garage out east of the building here where there's right now a little one car garage sits out there, replacing that, taking it out. Yeah, putting, replacing that with a six car garage and heating it all, or heating one bay for Gail to put his skid loader stuff in and then move our, our Suburbans and vans and car up here so they're not a block and a half away every time they need to go get them. And then we could use that building down there for storage for other, other things. And I guess what kind of started that topic is because the wood shop, if you haven't been in there yet, most of the equipment in there is, you guys, is probably my age, Dr. Thor's age, not mine. But there's some pretty old stuff in there and we had, what was his name?
Craig Ferrex.
Craig Ferrex, come and he presented to us. That's what he kind of does, is helps people set up their wood shops. And kind of came up with a plan for us on what, what tools or saws would work in our shop and dust collection and that kind of thing. But that got the topic started on the garage to get Gail's stuff out of there so we had room for the wood shop stuff. So those are the topics that we're talking about. There's also with the concrete wall out here, there's a section, I don't know if you noticed this section right out the locker room door, that the cement's all busted up on that. And on the track, we're going to move, if we do this, we'll move the high jump area into the end zone of the football field, the east end zone. Since we're eight man, there's room over there. So there'd be a cement pad to put that in there. We need cement pads for the runways, new ones. Will they be moved or they'll just be pulled out?
They'll be in the same place. Just a cement pad for pole vault and then runways.
So back to the track. That guy came and gave us an estimate. Just some past history on that track. It's fourteen years old, right?
Yeah, anywhere between fourteen and eighteen.
Yeah, the guy told us that every five to seven years after you put a new track, you're supposed to re-treat it.
Structural spray.
Structural spray, about fifty thousand. They could do that in the last forty years. Well, it's never been done here. And so our track is in bad shape. So after fourteen to eighteen years, we're looking at a new track instead of just a fifty thousand dollar build to treat it again. So he gave us an estimate and he can do it this summer. He could fit us in roughly a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the resurfacing the track and the run, well, it's not there in the concrete. So we still have to pay for the concrete on top of that. So is that pole vault runway two then? All three of them?
And it was a hundred and forty-seven for black and if you want to go with red, it's a hundred and fifty-five. He sent both quotes for that.
Dr. Burick mentioned last month, was there any insurance with the flood escalate the damage from two years ago?
Is that a flood plain?
I, I had an adjuster come. I talked to Danny. Yeah, and it wasn't a covered expense.
Oh, okay. Shoot. Because it was underwater, underwater.
For about three days, yep.
Well, at least, yeah.
Yeah, it was three days, I think.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's even a flood plain, is it?
If it's not, I don't know what the definition of flood.
It's really expensive.
Was, was it the type of policy we had or was it the situation that they didn't cover?
You know, I, I, I don't recall if, you know, if we want to, if we want coverage for something like that. If I had a conversation with Danny about, well, what would that cost? You know, the adjuster just came and said, no, that's, you know, it's, it's not a covered expense. Okay. Moved on, which is what kind of what I expected to hear. And I, you know, to be honest, I don't recall that there was a great, a significant more amount of damage after the flood than before. I mean, the track was in rough shape prior too. That didn't help. And some of our adhesion problems now may be exasperated by that. But it didn't just destroy the track like that. And that might have had something to do with it. He may have came and looked at it and said, I've seen much worse tracks than this. Which, you know, a couple of folks that we've had, coming with estimates have said, we've, we've seen worse, kids have run on worse tracks. But ours seems to be deteriorating quite a bit, you know, I mean, since when I came, I mean, we went out, you've seen the lane six, for example. So the, we would just need a good plan if we did this. I mean, every five years, we would just have to plan. You don't wait until you start to see it deteriorate. You structural spray it and protect it again. To try to prevent, minimize the, maybe the amount of moisture that goes straight through into our foundation. You did see, you do see in your packet that Nick and Lyle Lingefelder came to do some work or came to take a look. And, you know, the, the numbers that you have here, the, the lower the number, the higher the elevation. And indeed, he, he does say, boy, there just isn't much elevation change from your highest point, which is the crown of the field, to your lowest point, which is the mouth of, of that drainage ditch. And so he's, you know, to, to move water from the southeast corner of the track to the drainage ditch, you just wouldn't be able to bury that tile far enough. It would be, you know, not too far below the surface, which is, you know, his expertise, obviously. So Nick, Lyle just didn't feel that this is a worthy tiling project, his expertise. Because he just can't get the water, the water out of there very easily. You know, so, and that's, that's good enough for me as far as paying an engineer maybe to come in. Because that's what we've been talking about since I've been here, is do we, we need a, we need an engineer to come in and really help us understand where we can go with this water. Which, you know, we've never done, never paid to have that done. So he's our local expert, I guess. So we have that information to consider.
I don't really know that our, our water is our biggest problem. I mean, the drainage part of it, water is, but I don't know what drainage is.
Yeah.
Because I don't know that you're going to get, you know, in the wintertime, water in the winter and freezing thongs will hit you. And if the ground's froze, you're not going to get rid of the water anyway. It's so flat there. You've got to have, you know, thawed out ground to get down to the tile to drain the water. If the ground's froze, it's going to sit there on top of frozen ground. And that's what kills you is that water in the cracks. I think if we would have treated this track, my opinion, like it should have been done, we wouldn't have got moisture into those cracks and froze and that's what did the damage. You know, if, if the track is sealed like it should be, that water will sit there, but it won't penetrate any cracks, won't get underneath, won't do any damage. I don't think it hurts us in the summer at all when the ground's thawed out and not, you know, freezing and thawing. That's my opinion.
Just for your guys' information, he said that just to patch it, what the problems we have now is going to be forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. That we're going to sneak in just to patch it and then more patches, more places are going to show up. And he also said if we were to take everything out, put a new track in, he'd say five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, what I had.
Just the base, asphalt underneath, we had to replace it.
So I guess we thought for, we could do it for a hundred and fifty. That didn't sound quite as bad as.
And you really, if you look at it, we've saved two to three treatments over the fourteen to eighteen, which is what it costs to redo it. So are we out of money? Now, I mean, it's kind of worse right now anyway, so. Now our track would probably be in better shape right now if we had done it, but.
Mike, I got a question for you.
Yep.
How deep's the city sewer?
I have no idea.
That'd be, that'd be several, that'd be several foot below this and it's just water.
But they won't, will they let, they won't let you put it in the sewer, you can put it in the drainage.
Do I?
You'll fill the goods field beyond public sewer.
Well, you stock it with fish and sell permits.
Because your drainage doesn't go into the sewer, does it? Your drainage doesn't go into the sewer, does it? Just runoff.
Yeah.
Is there, is that available in that area?
The grounds, where you've got a big ditch right to the southeast, so yeah, it's available.
But there's nothing that goes underground.
Yeah, dishes would, oh, that's for sure. That dish is your main, your main waterway there.
Go back to freezing what you said.
So the base of the track underneath the top is just asphalt, asphalt, it's not, do they make cement like concrete? I'm just assuming that would be a lot better, you know, judging by the roads that we bounce across, like anywhere, like when they put a concrete road, it lasts a heck of a lot longer than.
That was a question we asked. I don't remember what his answer was.
Well, your son's, son's house is on the city sewer, it's right there.
But they won't let you put it in the sewer. You've got to look at the drainage system. They're two different things. They're two different things. The drainage doesn't go into the goods. It goes into that creek, doesn't it? That runs down Long Highway 13? Otherwise you just fill it with gooze up right away with water.
He thought the base of the track was in pretty good shape. The way that it's, the way that we have in line, lane six, it's, it's pretty much lane six the whole way around. He said that's where they seamed it together. So he said if your base was bad, it'd be more cracks going across the track. So he's pretty sure that we don't have.
The base is.
Yeah, that the base is going to be pretty good. They're not, you know, until they start ripping it up, you don't know for sure, but.
And he said he would come back if we decided to do something and, and look under the bad spots to make sure the asphalt was good before they started.
They can patch the asphalt and spots.
Yeah, I'm just assuming though, that a patch on an asphalt, on the asphalt is just like when they patch the road out here on S and A. It's just a disaster.
Instead of a hole to home.
Yeah.
I don't know, I've been on it for a year, don't know what it looks like.
You gotta sneak around the coach. That's the only thing. I guess my concern is, is like if we're going to fix it, like make sure we fix it right, you know, like don't cut a corner and then have the foundation be bad and then have we redo it again.
If you get into wanting to do concrete, that's where you get a lot of money. Five, six hundred thousand dollar price tag, so.
Yeah, we can't put it off. It's bad shit.
But he really didn't have a lot of concern. I didn't think about it.
But does he sell the concrete too or does he only sell the top?
He doesn't do either. He doesn't sell the asphalt. We'd have to line somebody else up today.
He doesn't do the base.
But he sells the top. So he's actually makes more money off of us if our top goes to crap faster.
Unless we go somewhere else because we don't like the job.
You know what I mean? I'm always a little skeptical.
Too many options are there in this bit as far as companies for doing that.
Uh, no, I got ahold of one out of Kansas, I believe. And then there was one out of Missouri that just sent us a quote and then, yeah, this one out of.
They're agreeing with him to do it.
And what, I mean, when we talked to him, he said, yeah, concrete's going to last longer. That's why I want to do concrete runways and pads because those areas are higher traffic. A four foot runway to long and triple jump and you have kids running down that constantly where when you get out on an eight lane track, he said you get to spread that out more. And you don't have the same constant traffic where it's going to wear into the asphalt. So you're able to utilize that and it lasts longer. So that's how he explained it and it's for those smaller areas, concrete's best because it's not going to break up. Whereas in the bigger areas using the asphalt, it's going to last just fine.
Then my other question, I guess, about it is, are we for sure we're never going to go back to 11 man football if we put this stuff on the east end?
We'll make sure it's far enough that you could still.
That we can still.
Yep, the pad won't be too big.
So, you know, I, I shared with building grounds, you know, this, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shaz, are we done? Is there anything else on that list you wanted to?
Uh, I just, everybody's okay with kind of forgetting about the, any tiling thing. Well, let's just go through them, I guess, one at a time. The, the lights, if you want to explain to us what, you've kind of got an estimate on that.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the, the estimate is, is low to high, which would be wooden poles versus metal, steel. 70 foot high, right now we're probably 45 to 50 foot high poles, just eyeballing it. So they'd be, they'd be back. Probably 25 feet, 70 feet high, 25 year warranty LED bulbs.
Outside the fence.
Outside the fence. So it probably between the road, between the road and the fence and then between the two fences on the south side. So there'd be a total of four. You're, you're, it'd be almost literally between night and day of what we've got now and, and what we would go to. This company would, would be able to digitally monitor our system. And if there were, there were any issues, a light bulb goes out, which they don't expect to happen. That's why they say we'll come and replace a doggone light bulb if you lose an LED bulb. And that was 25 years?
25 year warranty.
25 year warranty. So that, that was one of them. You know, that was just, we have two of them. You have one in your packet, the one that we got today is brand new. So Mr. Schmidt, I guess, could speak more to that, but. You're, you're probably looking at a high end of 200. For, if, if you wanted to go with steel towers. On a 25 year warranty, you know, the system that you can manage with the app on your phone and not a pole at the west end with a padlock that. Sometimes we chasing Gail down, find where the key is to get in that lock. But it's an archaic system, what we have down there now. So it's, it's definitely time to upgrade.
Warranty hasn't changed with the structure though, right? Pole versus steel?
No, the warranty is on the lighting system and. So I assume they would warranty that they're pulled, but steel wouldn't stay.
They must not have a problem. I just noticed the poles we got today is the wind and track meeting. The lights are kind of going like this. You go up another 30 foot, they're going to go away. So I was just wondering whether they'd warranty on, you know, steel's probably going to be.
Yeah, steel will be stable.
I don't know.
Steel will be.
But they'll go either way or wood or steel. I mean.
Same, were they, was that even an option on your second?
The second one's just steel.
Just steel.
And that's the company that has the 25 year warranty or the one that he sent out the information for that was, they would only offer a five year warranty with it. So.
So what was the two bits?
The one you have, I think, with steel poles was 180,000 and the one I just got was 220. And that's a company out of Iowa that does it. They're the, they're the company that's doing Summerlands Field right now. They did David City, they've done Blair and they did Battle Creek. So.
I'm pretty sure a steel pole's going to go like this in the wind too.
Yeah.
Must be really heavy. Well, I climbed a lot of green bends in the, in my job and then like they all move.
Are those poles right now, are those original still?
That's a good question, Wayne.
I don't remember them ever being replaced and that's been.
50 plus.
27 years anyway. Have you ever, I mean.
Not, I don't have a recollection of, I know there, yeah, so obviously the banks, the lights have been changed, but.
Yeah, I don't think poles ever have been. I mean, a good Crete sole pole like that will definitely last a long, 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 long time. But I don't know. I guess if we're going to set those lights up higher though, I don't know. Says here that energy costs become half by switching over to LED. Any idea what our costs are right now?
I wouldn't have an idea that our utility expense would be down there. So it's, it's not going to be a tremendous, I mean, it'll take a long time to. Think we've even begun to chip into that.
What, what's your outlook on the change of height of lights? What are you looking to see? What's the benefit of from where, let's say we moved the poles and left them the same height?
When they talk about it, it's called the candle foot is what they're looking at. So in the state of Nebraska, you have to have 30, 30 candle lights per foot. And what you illuminate on the field. And so they say if you keep a shorter pole when you put up the new lights, it's a lot harder for them to get that light pushed out to the different areas of the field. Whereas if you put them higher, it makes it a lot more even. So it eliminates all the dark spots and making it look blotchy. It's all one illuminated the same. How he explained it to me was like taking two different color, two different buckets of white paint and painting one half of the field one color and then going over the other half with another color and how you can see the difference. Whereas if you put them up higher and put them farther away, then it's able to light it all the same. And it looked like you did it with one bucket. So.
We have a problem right now in that west end zone, don't we?
It's dark.
It's awfully dark. Yep.
So.
You'd almost lose a ball out there, you know, in that west end zone, don't you? It's, I mean, it's awfully, awfully dark.
Sometimes it's hard to move the ball in these zones too.
True.
Those are always in the dark.
You can talk to my son about that.
Call home field advantage, right? It's going to get in the right sunblock.
Any, any idea if this has went up a lot since COVID happened? I, I don't, building costs are just.
From the start of COVID, I would have no idea. I talked to Norfolk Catholic, they had their loads done. Jeff Beller told me. 15 years ago, I believe it was, and it was about 100,000 when they did it. It's over 15 years. That's about double the price.
I've been in talks about some projects anyway, right now around our V line, it's a 40% jump in costs right now is what we're estimating.
Can they're able to get the materials to do this?
The company I talked to today said that it's a seven week process. So five weeks, they'll have the materials here, two weeks to install.
Oh, wow. I'm surprised.
So, yeah.
Cause they know where all our wiring lays and that that'll all be included, that putting wire into the poles, turned on, everything.
Yep. And he said he would come out and be on site before anything started or whatever to look at it and make sure that everything was accurate.
Any possible resale of the current lights and the current poles?
That I don't know.
Put them on big iron.
Sell them over there to Gary Creek where he can light it more.
Different lights in the city uses, I presume, light bulbs?
Yeah.
This Travis one said to use your local electrician.
West, the west baseball field down there sure could use some of these lights. They're curious if their old halogen's up on poles and they're pretty poor.
So, I mean, that.
I don't know.
It would be awesome if somehow our city could benefit from them. You know, if we, you know, otherwise. You know, it's pretty hard to sell an old light bulb, even though they're expensive ones.
The chance that it's a rodeo right now.
Mom, that's what I mean. I guarantee you they'd sell on big iron for more than what you think. Because somebody buy them for a cabin lot or an arena or something.
Good option now.
The bathroom with big iron is 10% commission.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next one, the retaining wall. Is that the only little piece of concrete on the, the track? It's just this one.
I think so. It's by far the, the one that's got our attention.
It's pretty bad shape.
You know, we, if we looked at every, if we looked at every square yard of concrete, we'd find a lot more, but this one is becoming unstable.
So I think we're going to, I mean, I think we want to look at, I had a cap around, nobody out here while we're at it, doing that. We're going to have to get specs and see whether they can come up straight into the building or whether they're going to have, if there's not enough light to get the right slope, if they're going to have to come. And further down the sidewalk and angle it, get the right slope. And isn't there something, if it's over so many feet, they've got to have a, a landing area?
Yes.
Or halfway up, so. So we'll have to get, I mean, we don't have those details or.
You can find them online, but I think.
I mean, as far as what we don't.
Sure, sure. I talked to Scott at Ashoffs. He was struggling to catch up with Walt. They're busy, his, his all get out. He said, we're, our calendar, summer calendar's filling up, he said, but I'm sure we could probably fit you in. So if, if the board, I probably can't wait a month.
Do you have a number on that, the cost?
I, I put as high as 100 for the wall, potentially replacing the sidewalk in front of it. Cause he's not so sure that he can tear that wall out without damaging the sidewalk. Wall, sidewalk, ramp and concrete pad outside the boys locker room. Which is a pretty good section. So I, I went as high as 100 because we were, we were pushing 60 last year for wall, ramp and sidewalk already. So it would be 10% plus out here, so. And then the, the other spot or two that we find, track runways, it'll, it'll creep.
I would, I would ask everybody to consider this. If you're going to have them come, have them do the garage and all the concrete at one time. That way they're. You're not going to get them back, you know, get it done.
Yes, I overlooked that pad for the garage, if that's.
Yeah, if they're here, we must, I mean, it's 30 yards apart.
We have to be ready for it. They're working and all that to replace when they come, so.
Yep, it takes some coordination.
Okay, the six vehicle heated garage. At me, this sounds like about half the price of what it's going to cost us. But we're going to have the shop. Kids, Scott, teacher are going to do a lot of it. He, he did say he would like to have somebody, a contractor, somebody local, working with them. To get it right. I don't know how that's going to work, you know, because if you're going to have kids working on a contractor, he's not going to want to come in and work a few hours today and a few hours tomorrow. They're going to want to come in and. Get it done as fast as they can probably. So I don't know just how that worked. But maybe he'll just come up and give him. You know, this is how you should do this, this is how you should do that and just more information than actual work, I don't know.
Juden doing electrical too?
Yes, he's certified.
Oh, wow, we got lucky there. Teach the kids another skill.
Yeah. So yes, I did ask him to see if he could get a little more specific on his estimate because he gave us one without this itemized list. And so. Again, he's wanting to be very careful. This is, it'll be the first time him, you know, doing this. So I said, estimate high and we're understand. You know, if this ends up being, you know, if you approve it and it come, you know, total bills come in at 42, you know, don't worry, you know, Mr. Juden, we, you know. So he, he feels, you know, pretty good about this. The dirt work, he's not, he wasn't supremely confident what the dirt work could be. Or potentially what his outside labor would be. We did visit with a local contractor today who has flat, you know, who, you know, understands what we're considering and. The flexibility that, that he would need to provide and he seemed to be very interested in working with the school. You know, so there's that, that potential is in place. So it would be a great project, obviously for our kids. It would solve a couple of problems that we have. So that's.
So what do you guys think about the heating part of it? I, I really don't think we need to heat the whole building. You know, you got to isolate the whole thing.
Warm spot goes somewhere in there.
Yeah, if you did one bay.
No, and he's clearing snow and ice anyway with the kids, kids gear anyway. He's got to thaw that out a little bit.
No, I agree that we need some heat. I don't know if we need to heat.
Won't that make it more expensive that we put walls between every bay?
Yeah, yeah, I would just put one wall in one bay.
One partition.
And have that, yeah, one partition, the rest would be open and then, you know, cause I'm sure you're probably going to use it somewhat as a shop too, if you, if it's heated.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, probably have a bench of stuff in there.
So even if, you know, we were, you know, I don't know how expensive insulation is, I guess. So even if you insulated the, the whole thing, but yet your heater was. The, the heated portion was, you know, the, you had a two, you know, so if you've got two, two and two, so this bay of two is where your heater is. And it is walled off maybe from the other two. But those were still insulated, at least these, you know. It'll still help. That is what I'm saying over here. This one could be kept at 50. These might only get down to 30 when it's really 10 degrees outside.
And you put a space heater if you need it.
Well, I guess, if you thought you needed one, but.
I mean, if it's insulated.
Good, yeah, yeah. But right now, the shed we have now is, it was, was good. That serves a purpose. But it's as cold in there as it is outdoors dang near.
You're going to have to do insulated doors too and they're going to be a lot worse.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. These doors are probably way too cheap. I'm just guessing.
For six of them?
Yeah, for six of them, I would guess each door would be close to that thousand limit or so. I don't know.
There's just, just three doors. It's two, two deep. It's a two deep.
If you get vehicles, just to get them in under a rough and odd wind, that makes, you know, just for cars and that kind of thing. It makes a world of difference. They don't have to be 50 degrees when you crawl in the car. It can wait two miles down the road for them to get warm.
You'd have a car that wouldn't start in that north shed.
Oh, you did have that trouble, really?
Yeah.
You need a motion on all this, Mike?
I would think it would be better to insulate it when we build it versus if you, because down the road, maybe they're going to want to insulate it. And probably going to be more expensive to do it in six or 10 years than what it is now to at least insulate it all. And then maybe only put a heater in the one spot.
If you put the radiant heat in, I mean, that kind of. If you put the radiant heat in, I mean, that kinda directs the heat to a certain area, so it would keep it warm where it was working more so. It would still heat everything a little bit, but it'd be warmer in that bay under his bench.
I have a question, does anybody have any experience with the heat that people bury line in the cement?
Yeah, it's real expensive.
It's expensive to run?
Use of water, doesn't it?
I got a wood stove you can use.
I know some people heated their shops and stuff.
You're right.
It's very nice, but it's expensive, it's expensive to put in and it's expensive.
Takes a certain kind of cement added, doesn't it, in there, to help radiate the heat?
Yeah, I don't know, I know it takes a lot too many. And the last thing is the shop, I guess, we all got packets, all that equipment, I don't know if you guys wanna see them or not, but there's a... Passing around, there's a bunch of, bunch of tools and saws and stuff. That was pretty amazing, we can get all this stuff for twelve thousand dollars, it blew my mind. How many saw, different saws were there, five, six saws? Cause there was three of them in one category.
I think he's, he's wanting to do a lot of cabinet work, and that's why he could find these, propose finding shapers, so they can start doing cabinet work there in the shop.
And then there was two, three dust collectors, portable dust collectors, you just move them over to the saw, you use them and hook a hose up to them.
Right here.
Instead of having one system where you hang pipe all over the place, every one.
Needs to be more in textbooks. I mean, honestly, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I can't believe you get that.
Ten, ten thousand, that's...
That was mine, if you want, you can have it.
So we, we, just on the financial part of it, so if we're looking at five fifty to six hundred thousand for everything that you've discussed, and that's high end, that's two hundred for a track, two hundred plus for football lights, so if we're looking at five fifty to six hundred thousand, we have that money in building fund. You know, right now, we have one payment on the elementary, four hundred and a quarter, elementary will be paid off in June. We anticipate about five hundred thousand more in revenue from this fiscal year off your levy set last September. So, so you have money in your building fund to pay off the elementary project and for upwards of six hundred thousand to cover track, football field lights, retaining wall, ramp, concrete work, garage, shop machines. And then you can determine next budget, next fiscal year, where you want your balance for building fund. You're on three years now at nine plus cents, which is, which has generated revenue to really do a lot with facilities that, that probably needed to be done. And it never ends, but, you know, your, your budget committee will probably consider something less than nine and a half cents next fiscal year, unless something happens between now and then. But you do have the revenue in building fund.
Get these projects done, that wipes out a lot of our bigger projects, isn't it, down there?
I think so, Tim, I mean, I...
The track was always hanging out.
Yes, that's been the albatross, you know, we've been worrying about, and I was, I was thinking at least twice what, and that shows, you know, my level, I've never had to rebuild a track, so, but the football field lights was way more than I would have anticipated. So, yeah, you know, Tim, I don't know of another six-figure, single six-figure project that's out there.
I think there was one on the list, I mean, we knocked most of them out. I think we could go down to eleven in the future.
So is there anything anybody has a concern with that you would wanna pull out of this group?
I haven't seen a figure on the, the football lights.
Yeah, this is kinda shocking.
Yeah, I mean, that's more than the track. I guess I...
The most expensive.
I was surprised by that, but...
What a twenty-five year warranty though, too, that's pretty good.
Yeah, you never got, yeah, they're a lifetime.
Which seems like a lifetime.
Mike could even have a night funeral with you.
I won't need near that much heat.
So you, you could, you could entertain a motion of not to exceed X amount of dollars, and some decisions can be made down the road, specifics about your garage, for example, specifics about concrete, that can kinda be made a little bit later, but we can get on a calendar for a couple of different folks.
Yeah, it's almost getting late, isn't it?
Yeah, we usually make this decision in March.
Yeah. Well, if you collect it, you better spend it, you know, right? I mean, we can't just let it sit on account and do nothing with it.
Do we wanna approve all these by a certain amount for each project, or do we wanna approve it for a total dollar amount and see how it plays out? I guess I would kinda like to do each project separate, be my opinion, and then if one comes in over...
Yeah, approve by bid.
We can adjust that one and not the whole program, so we're not raising it off every single one of them. What do you guys say?
Prove as bid, if they go exceed, we gotta meet on them.
So do we need to make a motion with, with all these numbers in that motion, or can we make a motion as, as what this paper says?
If you wanna do each separate, I would, and are you saying a not to exceed amount?
Right, not to exceed the amount, so you have the lights...
The lights, I would go to two and a quarter. I would go to a two and a quarter not to exceed, you know, I mean, you know how you sometimes run into change orders, but...
Right.
So your track not to exceed two hundred, your lights not to exceed two and a quarter, your concrete work not to exceed a hundred. So you have those same figures, Mike, then?
Yes.
Your garage, thirty-five. Shop machines, I think twelve was pretty firm.
What did you say you said about the garage estimate though, that he was new about?
Well, this, you know, Derek's just a second year, he's, I tell you what, he's as handy as you might wanna find for age twenty-four, but...
But I'm just saying, is thirty-five gonna give him enough leeway?
Well, you know, that's just it, I mean, the board could always consider, okay, our, this came in higher, the dirt work, we couldn't, you know, we had to pay somebody extra to come and, you know, and I guess, you know, he's got concrete, three thousand, while we, we also have a hundred thousand for total concrete work, those could be overlapped, so it is... So, I mean, the board can always adjust the previous decision.
The three thousand for concrete work on that building just baffles me, I just don't see how that's ever gonna happen.
Well, that's when we're gonna see, go to thirty-five, then we're gonna probably go to be meeting again about that estimate, because you even talked about the garage doors, and then if it's down to two...
I figured, I just added, did quick math, I figured two twenty-five for the lights, two hundred for the track, and I figured the building at forty, and then I figured the shop equipment at fifteen, and that gets us up to five hundred and eighty thousand. So if, like Dr. Al said, if we set a budget at six hundred thousand and stay below that, we should have a little bit of room.
Yeah, forgot the concrete work at the track.
No, I got that in there, I forgot to say that, but I do have that in there, the hundred thousand for the retaining wall and the whatever out here.
Do you have to do any of that stuff out? I mean, like leave, like bid it out, I mean, you got a hundred plus thousand dollars.
Yep.
I mean, on concrete guys, I didn't know if you have to have local guys bid on it.
If, you know, we've, we've bid them out separate projects, you know, we could...
I, I was curious, I didn't know if you had to or not.
Yeah, we have to have multiple bids for over a hundred thousand, which we do for the track and the lights.
Then the concrete work is a lot, several different projects, and we could split them out as this project and that project, so they'd be a hundred thousand. So if we raise the garage to forty thousand, stick with all these figures, and then a total of, what, just five hundred and eighty thousand?
Yeah, I raised the, the shop equipment to fifteen too, but I don't know if that's, I, I just, I like round numbers, so...
And then a total of five eighty.
Yeah.
So, anytime we go over those amounts, we're gonna have to approve it by the board.
Yeah, and I think we'd have time, because none of this is gonna happen within a month, and so we, you know, in May, here's where we're at. I don't know if we will have spent any money by then, but quite possibly we may, if we're lucky and we have somebody come move dirt, but we're not gonna be coming to the top half of any of those until a few months down the road.
So we're gonna make that motion with all those numbers in there?
Chance, you wrote it down.
Can we make the motion?
You wrote it down.
Yeah, she wrote it down.
I did it in my head.
Make the motion as stated, and then we'll, you can get them in the minutes, but we're not...
As presented.
Can you make a motion or a discussion item?
Yes.
You can?
Yes. Yep, any item on the agenda, or can take action.
We got all the numbers, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Say not, not to exceed.
I make a motion.
I'll, I'll make it, I'll make a motion to approve the project, summer project as stated on this paper, which you will itemize in the minutes, not exceeding five hundred and eighty thousand, and any individual project that goes over the stated amount will have to be approved by the board before it goes over.
Exactly.
Go ahead, I'll rescind it.
Yeah, you can vote approve. Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Myself, yes, motion carries six to. Twelve, the Esser funds.
This should be a much tidier discussion, because most of it maybe needs to take place by budget committee over the course of the next several months, honestly. As you know, I shared with you, and I did share in the newspaper a week last week, the feds are sending a lot of money across the country, it's probably in our best interest to go ahead and claim that. I've been attending several sessions through the Department of Ed on the process to do that, which is not entirely complicated, but we do have to prepare a budget, it does have to be approved as an allowable expenditure of the Esser funds, and there, and Esser is a good title, actually, you know, cares was the name of the first one. The second one is C R R S A, the third one is ARP, that will be, that will be coming next month. But they're all Esser funds essentially, so there's Essers one, two, and three. We're focused right now on the two thirty-one thousand on Esser two funds. For the past couple of months, I've had a, you know, a two column sheet for you. We can kinda start to forget about the column on the left, those funds have been expended. But we've got two thirty-one, and we have till September of twenty twenty-three to spend it. Our Esser three funds, which we'll find out about next month, we'll have until September twenty twenty-four to spend that. So school districts are already starting to think about, you know, those funds and where, where those funds can go. So anything that is an expense that a school has incurred that the otherwise might not have, have it been for, have it been for COVID, okay? And so focusing on, on school safety, air quality is a huge one, so we should've got stock in HVAC system companies, because that, they're, they're making out like bandages, I get ten emails a day, I bet you, from companies that are soliciting to spend our Esser funds. So, or for addressing delayed learning. You know, so dealing with trying to, you know, the, the, the school disruption and the effect on kids. So even, you know, mental health expenses, just any expense a school district could possibly have that they might not have had, hadn't been for COVID. So the, I, I just have options probably for budget committee to, to consider, quite honestly. And the ones that are shaded are purchases made prior to this that we now can go back and claim those expenses, okay? Not a tremendous amount of money, but anything with technology. So, speak, so speaking of two things, and we got a couple of guests here, and I wanna bring them into the conversation quick if necessary, so that they can go home, because they gotta teach tomorrow. Dedensitizing, dedensitizing is a big one, because that comes directly from social distancing. Okay, so can you dedensify your space? So people aren't, so you don't have thirty kids in classroom, or you don't have forty-five kids on a bus. You want by a bus, I probably can justify it, because, but then I need another driver, because then I need another route, because we wanna dedensify a bus, I'm just saying, school districts are having these conversations, right? Ms. Thompson has visited the past month or so about, you know, potentially another teacher to support a class that has a high level of needs. High number of students, a higher number of students and, and a, and a higher number of needs, these were kids who were separated for two years, who were split for two years, because they came in as kindergartners at upper twenties, and so we split them, and we currently, as a district, that's kinda what we do in our district, is we split K and one, the two maybe most important areas of education to get those kids reading. And we know the teacher-student ratio is a primary indicator of student achievement, so we want teachers to have twelve kids in K and one instead of twenty-four or five kids in K and one. Nice problem to have, we have good enrollment, we have robust enrollment, that's great. Our, our third grade class is still pretty significant in size, and still pretty significant in, in needs. We can use Esser two money to hire another teacher, to dedensify that class. So when you buy that teacher, you can use Esser two money through twenty twenty-four, so through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we would, you would have enough funds to hire a teacher, which low end would be sixty-five thousand, high end could be a hundred thousand, okay? By the time you're talking salary and benefits, okay, a teacher per year. So, so that's maybe a consideration that would need to be decided tonight, and we have an opportunity to get in on the Summerland Public School Smart Board purchase. I shared with you a page that showed just plain views, potential requests to smart boards, but we got a very reasonable price on smart boards, because Summerland's buying them for, so they're buying fifty, sixty, I don't know the number exactly, but they're buying a bunch, and so the company said, hey, at that, we'll sell you more at that price. So ESU put out, hey, anybody wanna jump in on this deal? Oh, we're interested maybe in some of these smart boards to replace, you know, our fifteen-year-old, how old would they be? You know, our MIMOs or our, our other smart screens. So we have a potential to do that, and that's a decision that would need to be made tonight. Would be an allowable expense of Esser two or even Esser three money, which I anticipate to be two point two percent higher than our Esser two money, which was two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So, and they're using the same calculation to determine your Esser three money. So, I, I, you know, May fifteenth, they're supposed to push those allocations out. On May fifteenth, I'm fully expecting a four hundred thousand plus allocation of Esser three. No reason to believe that it'll be less than four hundred, in fact, it should be somewhere closer to four hundred and fifty thousand on top of the two thirty-one. So that's great, but boy, a whole lot of conversations then need to take place, and could maybe be more reasonably done over the course of the next several months with the, with the budget committee. But something that would need to be decided tonight would be this technology purchase, or an additional classroom teacher for fourth grade next year to dedensify that class, but also would help us to, to meet the higher needs that we have in that class year.
So I did ask Mrs. Moret to come tonight to talk to you about the possibility of a one-year contract for a teacher. So while she's talking, I'm gonna hand out some data for that class, and I have second grade data, and then third grade data is on the second sheet, so, Mrs. Moret?
Hello, good evening, my name is Brynn Moret, and I'm a third grade teacher, here at New York. I am here tonight to advocate for the current third... I am here tonight to advocate for the current third graders and for their future. As an educational professional, I do know that COVID deepened the learning gap for students who struggle with higher needs, whether that may be emotional, behavioral, social, or academic. The data spreadsheets in front of you will show you my class prior to COVID, and then that same class coming into third grade after COVID. The data spreadsheets will also show you the gains that my class has made this year, and while these gains are huge, you can see that intensive intervention is still needed. I believe that this class would greatly benefit if their class were to be split into two sections for at least next year to help continue making up for the learning gap caused by COVID. Just a little background, second grade and below, students are learning to read, and third grade and above students are reading to learn. Therefore, students were not ready for that shift, because they missed the fourth quarter of second grade and instruction. The gap for these students has been even larger due to the COVID experience. A split class would provide a greater opportunity for individual interaction between student and teacher, an opportunity to provide more intensive intervention and extension and support for each student at whatever level they are at. Behaviors could be handled much more fluidly, because the teacher can give more one-on-one attention. With the needs of this class, a smaller class would allow the teacher to take the necessary time to correct or encourage students in certain areas, whether that is behaviorally, emotionally, or academically. A class that is too large does have an increased chance of there being more opportunities for students to hide, who don't want to reveal their lack of understanding, or difficulties that are preventing their learning progress. Kids need our attention, and with a smaller class size, the teacher can give his or her undivided attention to address the emotional, behavioral, and academic needs. Although I won't be their teacher next year, I can hold a special place for these students in my heart, which is why I am here advocating for the best interests of their future. I genuinely care that their needs are met, so that they can continue to grow educationally. I ask that you take my thoughts and feelings into consideration as they transition into the years to come. Thank you for listening and for your time.
Thank you for coming and sharing.
So the spreadsheet you have in front of you just kind of shows you the red and green, but giving you some numbers, you know, at the beginning of the second grade year, that class had twenty-eight percent was not proficient in math, but then going into the third grade year, they were at sixty-nine percent not proficient. So COVID really hit that grade hard. And Mrs. Moret has been able to make gains with them, significant gains. She's got that down to fifty-seven percent now. We haven't tested yet in the spring, I'm sure there's been more improvement. But, you know, another year with a smaller class size, so more intensive interventions can be put in place, I think would just be far more beneficial. The same thing happened with reading, where at the beginning of second grade, forty-four percent of that class was red, which means below benchmark. And at the beginning of the third grade year, fifty-seven percent was red, which is below benchmark. So that's just academics. And this class in particular, behaviorally, emotionally, socially, there are high needs in the class. So I would just urge you to consider, and the needs can be then split between two teachers. There can be walk-to-read, where reading could be leveled, walk-to-math, where math could be leveled, just depending on what the teachers would be comfortable doing. I guess I can ask you if you have any questions for Mrs. Moret?
We talked about this class back.
We did, yes, yes, so you had some parents contact you about this class, yes.
This is the first time we've talked. Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, Mrs. Moret obviously is a quite accomplished novice teacher. You know, and I would say that one thing we know about our Esser three funds that are coming is twenty percent must be applied to unfinished learning. So that, so we, we will, the, the application will be slightly different, and they will say, if you have four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty percent is ninety. Where do you intend to spend your ninety thousand? And you better convince us that it will be addressed specifically to unfinished learning. Well, this would accomplish that, because teacher-student ratio would definitely qualify as a, as a, as a, as a school, a school district, yeah, decision to address that.
I have a question, maybe you don't do this anymore. Didn't you used to rotate fourth, fifth, and sixth to go to different teachers all the time?
And we did, and we found last year that there was almost an hour a week that was being lost in instructional time during those rotations. And so we had conversations with the teachers, and Mrs. Hudson was in on those conversations. And Mrs. Souzer, who is our primary fourth grade teacher, did decide that she wanted to have a self-contained fourth grade classroom. And so we went this year to a self-contained fourth grade classroom. And I think that's probably the model that we would stick with, unless the two teachers between themselves decided that, you know, one was stronger in reading and one was stronger in math, and then they could rotate between just those two classes instead of all three classrooms.
So is there a para involved in there right now that would be misplaced then?
No, because our paras are pretty open to where they go throughout the day. We would make sure, you know, we're very blessed that we have two title paras, so when it came title time for that classroom, it would be just like title time for kindergarten or first grade, to where both title paras would be used, and they would just be split between those two classrooms.
Do we have like a physical, another physical classroom that's not being used currently or something?
Yes, we do, so we would move probably the title classroom back into, we, this year gave our said classroom kind of an overflow class, and that was the old title room. And so right now, our title room has a full classroom, so we would probably move her back into a smaller classroom, and then that would give a full-size classroom there. Or maybe, you know, just an outside classroom, just kidding. We would have another classroom that could work.
Put them in the new garage.
Then you'd have to heat the whole thing, probably.
I got a question, Dr. O. If you can be so kind, I'm having a little difficulty, and I understand what we're doing here with the Esser funds, but, you know, earlier we talked about transferring general fund, building fund, lunch fund. Do we need to replenish any of that, or is that a separate item? How does that work?
We, we can't use Esser funds to supplant expected expenses that aren't COVID-related.
Okay.
However, every school district can do that to a certain degree. Has any, let's say they were gonna use general fund or building fund for an HVAC project. They knew five years ago.
You need to turn the camera off before you start going.
They, you know, they may find that, oh, I, I now have, you know, we were building funds to prepare for an HVAC project, and now we have this windfall of cash, and so those funds that they have been building, they can, you know, now repurpose those. You, you might see on my lengthy list right here, I have new windows for the twenty building. That, that's something I'm gonna want you folks to take a look at over the course of the next month, several months, to determine whether you think those windows have deteriorated to a point. So if we were gonna replace those windows, if we, if they had been on our project list, oh, we now won't have to come up with the funds through our levy authority for that project, because they're an allowable expense under Esser. So in a, in a way, you, you will supplant, but we won't use that word.
Okay, yeah, that helps, thanks.
But, but can't we use it, it says right on here, we can do like the Gale and Tom, so.
Yes, yes, you can use it.
Essentially, that would be putting it right back into the.
Exactly, Chance, and some school districts will do that. They will pay the funds of their technology coordinator, because they promote and support technology in the district, or your custodial staff, because they keep the place clean, and a cleaner facility is a healthier facility.
Thank you.
So I, I would think just to expedite the conversation, if that's okay, because we, you could, you know, probably get into the weeds quite deep, but a decision probably need, well, it's in the best interest of, of the district for a decision to be made tonight, yea or nay, on either an additional teacher and the technology purchase.
Okay, I just wanna add, Chance, to your question is, you can rotate that money, but that money isn't gonna come from the government by the time we need to have it to rotate it there. See what I'm saying? You gotta do it before you get reimbursed. So you gotta have that money somewhere in your account to originally spend it, am I right on that?
Yep.
And then they'll reimburse it after the fact. I guess what I'm trying to say is like, can't you just write down that we used a hundred and four thousand for those two salaries to, to eat up part of that two hundred and whatever, thirty-one thousand?
Yes.
And that way it goes into that, so maybe that'll help eventually get it to where that pay, whatever you guys call it, reimbursement or whatever, can be, I don't know where to look for it. We're gonna have to rob from some, we're gonna have to rob from Peter to pay Paul all the time.
Yep, yep, I mean, and some school districts may use the bulk of their money to pay certain salaries, and they will find that their, you know, their total payroll expenses next year are gonna be lower, and so they may actually use it to address their levy authority. In fact, the UNICAM role is very well aware that the feds are sending all this money to school districts, and, and there are some senators that would love to see some, some intentional, purposeful, or mandated levy adjustments based on your Esser funds. We don't anticipate, we don't expect to see that come through, but that will be discussed for the next couple of years for sure at UNICAM.
I guess I personally would like to see us save, you know, that hundred and some thousand to try to help make that other, to make the payroll account more self-sustaining than having to rob all the time, because in the last, what, four months, we've robbed every month, haven't we, pretty close?
Well, for payroll purposes, it was just last month.
Just last month.
It's possible, yes. But the lunch fund is not covered, we got that taken care of here, off of that.
And that money's gonna come back in, in a month or so, hopefully.
Well, hopefully, yes.
So then, then we'll back it to clear again, which will be long before any of this other stuff will happen.
So you're saying it's more of a delay than we don't have it?
Yes, one, yeah.
It's, it's more of a delay than we're, than we don't have it?
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
We won't, we won't receive any of that Esser two funds at two thirty-one until Kelly provides me with the accounting spreadsheet to prove that we've had that expense. And so that will happen many times, and with two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, I will have many reimbursement requests that go in, okay? Unless we start to look at bulk salaries, that eats up a bunch of time.
That's why I think that, wouldn't that be smarter, because don't you save on interest and everything else if you get a bigger chunk at a time faster? And then we can use our extra money for something else later down the road if we need to, or want to. I guess that's how I, if it was like my business, that's how I'd wanna do it. I wanna get the money in my pocket faster than slower. Well, to me, the most important thing is the kids, and what they've lost and getting them back to where they need to be, so. You know, I agree with the teacher, extra teacher, you know, I don't know, that's something that's gonna be long-term, you know.
Could we just do it year by year?
Sure, you could do it however you want.
And see how things are going, and then, I mean, I think that's the best bet, because if we're very intensive with interventions, then it could only take a year or a year and a half to get them back to where they need to be.
So the, you know, the conversation with a prospective employee, which, you know, that, that would be a, you know, potential deal breaker for somebody, you know, if we say this is potentially just a one-year contract. That may be a perfect fit for somebody, depending upon their circumstances. Generally, it wouldn't be, but you never know, if somebody is willing to, to take that risk and.
And there's a lot of elementary, good elementary teachers out there, and that's not unusual to offer a one-year contract. I, I mean, it's been done since I taught here.
It can be done, I think it's unusual in general, but.
But it's not been done, yeah.
But it's done, correct. And then, you know, if you have attrition, you know, we don't, I don't know, you know, anticipate anything in the coming years. You know, we don't necessarily have a senior staff in term, you know, so, but that could happen, and then that one-year contract could become something different if.
Couldn't you just straight up be like, it's a one-year deal, but it's, normally we would only pay you forty thousand a year, but we're gonna give you forty-five, since we only give you a.
Yeah, they would probably be bound by the negotiated agreement, so we don't have any flexibility on that. So they would fall underneath the teacher's agreement.
Yeah.
But it could be a three-year, you know, because if they follow this class through sixth grade and fourth, fifth, and sixth, so. But he could set up their contract as a yearly thing.
They do that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every year, especially if they're not taught tenure.
Until they get to their fourth contract.
Yeah. Well, can I make a motion, or do we need more discussion?
We gotta do, well, it's a bit separate motion, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hire a fourth grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so first and second, what?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six to.
Thank you, Mrs. Moret.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson.
You're about to do good work. Can we go back to smart boards now?
Yeah, I mean, I, if I could get Tom Souzer away from his household of girls, he'd be here to say, this is, he's never seen prices this low, obviously, we're getting in on a bulk purchase. We have one smart board in year three, and this is Hudson's room, and these won't be identical to those, but they perform about the same, three years newer, I expect them to probably, you know, perform better. But, you know, this, this is just what classrooms, what twenty-first century classrooms have, you know. It's not your end-all-be-all, they still want their marker board, they still need their marker boards. But a very vivid, I mean, just think of your big screen TV, a touch big screen TV that they can use for math and, and reading, and, well, Mrs. Hudson probably speaks to everything that she can do.
Are these mobile?
They, they, they could be.
Okay.
We can make them mobile. Mrs. Hudson's isn't, she maybe wishes that it was, but, but she can answer any questions you might have about her smart screen and how she uses it.
Do you think yours is outdated or ready to be in three years old?
Not at all.
No, I used, the one I had before this was very outdated, but no, I don't think mine is at all that way.
So how are you looking to divvy these up between?
Okay, we, we asked teachers who wanted them, who was interested, and then we purchased several more. Because, you know, it's not so much about you, teacher, whether you want it, it's for our kids. So we want them in classrooms, we will train teachers, this comes with training, we will train teachers. And it's just, it's a, you know, quite simply, it's an engagement tool, it's more engaging, you know, when, when used appropriately, and, and our folks will. So fifteen of them will, will, will cover every reasonable classroom in, in our district.
So how much are they per board? Because it just says fifty to seventy thousand.
Okay, yeah, you, you should have a, you should, that was in your folder, it wasn't in your packet, Chance, it should be in your folder, because this came in late, just under three thousand dollars, so two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four, and I'm certain we paid more for, for Mrs. Hudson's three years ago.
How many do we got on there?
Fifteen.
So these will need to be replaced like every five, ten years, or?
Probably less than that, because I guess we'll be in a position, if there's some amazing new piece of technology that comes out in three years, and we're like, oh my gosh, yeah. But we used these MIMOs and Prometheans, and, and they still, they're still functional, but they're archaic. They're still functional, and, and, and again, it's about the teacher, it's not about the smart board, to be honest, you know, I mean, uh. So that'll just be a decision later, you know, when somebody thinks there's something bigger and better, and we've got our mon, our money's worth out of them, that'll be, you know, board decision at that time.
The reason I ask is I was on that Esser call, that Zoom call, you know, when they, they said that, well, a lot of schools bought the Chromebooks with the Esser funds, but, which is fine, because that money was here now, but you don't think that you're gonna have to have that money again, two, three years down the road to replace all these?
Yep.
And that'd be the same way with these smart boards, so it's gotta be budgeted.
If we plan, if we plan and budget.
Right now, the money's there.
Yep, and. Yep, and if we plan and budget and you, you replace X amount of Chromebooks every year, uh, which is our plan, um, so we get a few years down the road and we, you know, start, you know, making some plans for ten thousand a year for X amount of years.
You could do the same thing with us, you know, get four or five of them every year, so you don't have a lump sum every year, just, you know, rotation. And some teachers may find out they don't want to use them, you know, they don't-
Well, if they don't use them, then that'll be incumbent upon the principals to encourage them to use them. They shouldn't hang on, you know, this engaging piece of technology shouldn't hang on the wall powered off.
And this could be S R funds too, correct?
Yeah, oh yeah, anything technology.
Maybe you guys see those work? I haven't, I don't know.
Well, it's like what Jen has in her class.
Yeah.
I know, we miss what she did.
That's what Zach used in parent teacher conferences, right?
Yeah, that's it.
For the presentation, pretty sweet.
Just to test your teaching.
Kind of, it's just, yeah, it's just, right? He gave a presentation anyway for parent teacher conferences.
Jen, what are some things you use for, use it for?
Well, I, like, for example, today, we were using Protractors in math, and so I just have Protractors and rulers and different manipulatives on there that we can manipulate in front of them, because they also have those same manipulatives in their hands. A lot of different things with science that we use. And actually, one of the perks to my board that I didn't have with the first board I had is that more than one person can manipulate things on it. And, um, in the past, it was only one person could manipulate, and so that's another added bonus to the newer version of the smart boards that are out there.
So obviously, you can get apps and get online-
Well, there is like a, a smart board community that has a wealth of information for teachers, and that's like the hub where I find everything that I use. It's already designed or pre-made, and it comes with a smart board software, so it's not like teachers have to reinvent the wheel for everything that they're teaching, because that's just so time-consuming. But the kids are fascinated with it, even colleagues are fascinated with it. So, uh, I think that teachers will buy into this a hundred percent, and it won't go unused in any way.
This is for elementary and?
And high school.
And fifteen will cover-
That's what I was wondering.
Well, it's not a, it's not a board in every single room. Uh, not every room has a full-time dedicated teacher. Um, I mean, if the board were so inclined to purchase more than fifteen, but we, we had, we had thirteen teachers that said, yeah, I'd like to have it. We bumped it up a couple. Uh, if we, if you bumped it up another one or two or three, they wouldn't sit in a box, because somebody didn't want it in their classroom. Uh, we just added a teacher, which would probably be one more, but, um, it's a, it's a price we may na, we may not see again.
What was the regular price, you know?
I'd have to go find that document on, and I, and, and hang on, I can do it. I mean, they were, they were over, they were four, just over four thousand, and they, these are twenty-nine eighty-four per. So, about thirty.
That was for the seventy-five and a half.
But if you're gonna do it on a rotating years anyway, maybe get your fifteen, sixteen for now. More teachers buy in, budget for those instead of all one big group at once.
So instead of that more, more funds coming in next year that we could add to it.
And then, you know, you see how it works.
I'll make a motion to purchase fifteen smart boards for forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Zach, open it.
Okay.
Wyatt, one. Any more discussion? Okay, self, yes, yeah.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, seven.
So would you be okay then if we just have a board, or I'm sorry, budget committee, um, meet between now and the next meeting to, to have just more pointed discussions about allowable expenses and prioritizing, maybe?
I think we should make a mo, or I'd like to make a motion to include Gail and Tom's salary into the S R funds right now. I would like to say that, if everybody wants to second it or whatever. I don't know if we can even do that, Kim, if we don't have it as an actual discussion.
Well, you-
Just under the S R?
Yeah.
I guess it'd be, it would probably fall in that category.
You, you could, yeah.
Explain a little bit more about the budget committee, Doctor.
Okay.
What, what does that look like?
Your, your, your budget committee of three members, which is Mr. Souzer, uh, Tim, and Wyatt, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No. Do you have other members?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, you know, generally, we meet a, a few times late summer, mid to late summer, through, uh, the adoption of the budget, which, uh, is in the September meeting, um, to, uh, look at trends, look at priorities, um, and, you know, look at funds, quite frankly, and, and to determine, this is once the evaluation comes in from the county assessors, uh, and essentially to make a recommendation to the full board for, for setting levies, you know, for general fund and budget fund, so-
But are you talking about having a budget ma, meeting just for this S R funds?
Correct.
And then come back to us as a board?
Correct.
With recommendations?
Correct. I, they would probably be the primary committee to maybe kind of study, uh, where, how to expend six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in S R funds.
Okay. So if we hire the teacher and we do the smart boards, this would come out of the two hundred and, I gotta get my glasses on.
Two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one.
Yeah.
So what is that at?
You're up to, you're up to one thirty-five, so you're looking at about a hundred thousand still left in, in S R.
Which would not cover both salaries.
And that's summer school?
Uh, you-
Oh, it's summer school, we have.
You have some summer school expense.
But we can do one salary. The lunch program, would we have to pay for that upfront, or that's almost every deal?
No, that's-
So, what's, Chance?
I said we could do one salary, like, I'd be, I just think the faster that we can get the money in our pocket, the better it is. That's my opinion on this, because then you're not borrowing from Peter to pay Paul all the time.
Redo your motion.
I'll make a motion to include Gail's salary on the S R two funds.
Second.
Okay, so first and second, um, is there any more discussion? I just want to add, what is that dollar amount? Fifty-two thousand, sixty-two thousand, so put that in the motion.
Well, it'll be, yeah.
Yeah, it could change to that, yeah. Whenever it is after tonight, I'll, I'll just add it. I just picked one, is all I did, is-
Yeah.
Okay, so first and second, and, yeah?
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Okay, that gets us done with that, actually, I heard. Discussion, I don't know, right?
Yes, and if, like I said, if I can just call the budget committee, we'll, we'll talk and, and try to get together and-
On a rainy day.
Get a little more specific on it. I'll check the forecast.
On a rainy day.
You've got all these farmers here.
Thursday.
Okay, number thirteen, Rule Ten Revision.
So I sent you a video to enjoy today. If you didn't get it, Chance, it would probably be good for you to watch it. It's twelve, just over twelve minutes, um, because Rule Ten is going away, and it'll be replaced by three separate rules. The, the rule on accountability and accreditation, um, so that's gonna be replaced, uh, you know, coming up. So it's a done deal, um, so it'd just be good for you to be aware of that. I gave you a copy of Rule Ten several months ago, just good for you to have. I know you don't, it's not something that you spend a whole lot of time really getting to know. The principals are, are primarily, you know, responsible for making sure we follow the minimum standards established by the state, uh, for operation, uh, so, but probably good for you to watch, rather than us watching it here as a group, uh, find twelve minutes and just watch it. Just to kind of give yourself a little bit of background knowledge about what's, what's happening with our governing rules.
Okay, is that all we got on that then?
Yeah, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Move on, number fifteen, Frameworks, External Visiting Works.
So we had our, our, as you know, on the twenty-third, twenty, uh, second and twenty-third of March, we had our accreditation or our Rule Ten external visit, which happens every five years. You got the PowerPoint presentation, which we could've went through tonight, but you just have a hard copy, uh, for you. Um, and it's just a list of commendations and recommendations, a few of those things. Uh, pretty good process. Your principals did a great job of preparing, along with a, a, you know, great group of, of teacher leaders, uh, you know, preparing for this. Schools stress about it. They really don't have to. Um, but we had a good experience with the gentleman that came. We had superintendent from Ainsworth, superintendent from Burwell, uh, superintendent from Rock County, and a, a principal from, uh, 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 gonna be superintendent of Shelby Rising City, current principal, uh, at Riverside. Uh, so they were the external team tagged by the Department of Ed to come and make sure that we're following Rule Ten. Essentially, that's it. It's, it's good stuff, something for you to certainly be aware of. Um, and you've got, you know, the PowerPoint, so that's, I guess, the, the primary basic thing. They, they asked a lot of stakeholders to describe the school district in one word, right? Mr. Souzer, maybe you mentioned this, uh, because you were, were you interviewed?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I was, and Wyatt, you came up to-
Yes, and, and the, the words that came up most were fun, positive, and energetic about our school district. And that's probably, you know, would be three of the top five words we want, we'd want people to describe us. So now, uh, we, we start the second cycle. It never ends. Continuous improvement never ends. We start the next cycle, I shouldn't say the second, uh, and it begins with developing a new, uh, mission for our school, um, aligned with vision and goals. And so we talked about board goals, um, so that, that group will, will probably meet here in the early summer as well to align with where your school leadership team is, is seeing our, our new, our new mission and vision.
All right, yeah, I kind of put, put you on the spot a little bit when you asked the questions, and you had to come up with a one-word answer. It was kind of fun. All right, now we're gonna get down to that, doing some action. Discuss and take possible action on setting classified wages for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. We have a sheet here that lists where everybody's at. Do you have any recommendations on any individual categories?
I don't.
Changed. Thirteen. For you, Devin, you may know this, because you've been a employee here, but Chance, where this is set up is that every other year, they get a longevity, every third year, I believe, they get a longevity raise automatically, and then every year, it's whatever cost of living increase we give them. So some years, they actually get a double raise. They get the cost of living plus the longevity. And then in between those years, they just get the cost of living. So in that column that says longevity, some of them have numbers in, some don't, those are the raises they get from that. It's the third year, is it your third year?
Well, it, it depends on what year they're in. So you get a one percent longevity bump in year two, a one point five percent in year four, a two percent in year six, nine, thirteen, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-five. So your, your second year here, you get a classified staff gets an extra one percent on top of the raise, the annual raise. And then it goes up to top out at two percent on year six. And then every three or four years after that, another two percent. Obviously to encourage stick with the district.
So basically, all we need to come up with, unless somebody has a different idea with, with certain categories, is just a basic percentage raise, across-the-board raise for everybody. I don't know, we kind of look at that three percent area.
So this, all these numbers here are what you guys discussed last year at this time, basically, the number you came up with? Is that, I think we have a lot of adjustments to last year, if I remember.
Mm-hmm. Last year, there was some, quite a bit of discussion, uh, the, the overall parabump, and then a few individual classified employees that received a, an extra half percent for it. We did set one salary specifically at a certain amount, so, uh, I don't have any recommendations for that. But you do which one, obviously, but, um, and across the board is probably appropriate.
You have any other thoughts? So just start out, I'll throw that three percent out there, and tell me what you think, higher, lower?
Is that what we did two years ago? Did we ever do a cross-the-board raise two years ago?
Around that.
It was about thirty percent, wasn't it?
I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Cost of living lately hasn't been the three percent that we would've given. You know, last gas, that's, well, gas has gone up this year, heating oil and all that, but it hadn't for quite a while, last few years, so. But this year, probably is, cost of living probably is up three percent. For, for next year.
For the first meeting, we can't get cheated now.
Can you what?
Can't get cheated now.
I'm fine with three percent.
Me too.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to raise the classified salaries three percent for the twenty-twenty-one, or, yeah.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one year.
Twenty-one, no, twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two year, thank you. Sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so first and second, is there any more discussion?
Before you vote, uh, Gail's paid hourly. I would like to move him to a salary schedule a lot, to align with our other full-time, twelve-month classified folks. So what I did, and I visited with Gail about this, we, we, uh, because he's been hourly and is guaranteed at least ten hours of overtime. So he's a fifty-hour week employee, ten hours of those are, are time and a half. So easy to calculate what his annual wage has been, so I looked at that trend, and the twenty-nineteen calendar year was his, uh, was his highest wage. And so I would recommend that this percentage increase that you approve tonight is on his highest annual salary, and that he then just be paid salary, so he doesn't have to keep time card. Uh, Gail works a lot of, a little bit here and a little bit there, and a whole lot there, and a whole lot there, a whole- Gail just gets the job done. I'm not worried about him putting in, you know, he'll, he'll just get the job done. But keeping a time card takes just a, a, a little bit of, obviously clerical work away from Kelly as well, um, and it aligns him with, uh, our other, you know, full-time classified employees.
How many years have you been there?
Gail's been here nineteen years. Gail, correct me.
Working on a plus.
Working on nineteen. What's that?
Can't believe we haven't done this sooner.
Maybe so, maybe should've been done.
Do we, or is it even possible, like, to give the custodians, like, a bonus for all the extra crap they've had to do this year with the COVID, or is that something that doesn't ever happen, or? Just because I, I feel like we always address a lot of everybody else, but, like, they had to do a lot of extra cleaning and that kind of- Did you make an adjustment a year ago for, for you?
I don't know, two years ago.
Was it two years ago, forget it?
Um, I think, you know, Chance brings up a good point. Um, probably every staff member we have, though, could add- Probably every staff member we have, though, could advocate for, I've had to do, you know, something unexpected or whatever.
I think everybody deserves a bonus, no matter whether it's $10 clown cash or whatever.
But I, even when I sub for, like, kindergarten, I, it takes me 30 to 40 minutes to sanitize every chair and every table at the end of the day, or. So you're, you're right, Dr. Arnold, everybody in. Thank you, Gail.
Yeah, but you, you bring up a good point. The fact that it's an allowable expense of your Esra money, you know, indicates that the feds had even thought, you know, our people that keep our buildings clean, you know, I mean, it's just spotlighted a little more the importance of, of their duties, no doubt.
Because you told me in that email, we can't give a bonus and use that as the Esra fund, right? That what you told me on?
Correct.
I think I emailed you about that once. So we couldn't go into our budget committee and come out and say, we recommend that we give all staff X amount of dollars for dealing with COVID?
Well, your, your your, your classified staff, your, well, your classified staff and your certified staff are two
Right.
different entities. But, no, you could not. To say, as you worded it, no, because you had to deal with COVID, we're gonna give you all money and you're using Esra funds to pay for it. Can't.
Because it's kind of, it used to be even years ago that the school board would pay for Christmas, was it Christmas meals? No, beginning of the year, back to school, they can't even do that now.
You can do one a year.
You can do that?
You can do one a year.
Then why didn't you pay for mine the last time? I thought that was everybody, no, just kidding. Yeah, you're kind of stuck. You have to be careful.
Yeah, you, you know, it's taxpayer funds, so.
There's gotta be a little gray area, though, is where they're like, I mean, if we say we're paying the certain salary with Esra funds, you're saving some money in the backend that you could push out a different way.
When it comes, yeah.
There's a lot of gray area with the government.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a lot of conversations about allowable expenses, and if the Department of Ed approves it, then sleep well.
Okay, so do we need to?
Just one more thing, I mean, we can give them a higher raise this year, but you gotta realize that's gonna go in effect, in effect for every year down the road, too. You know, unless next year you come back and say, okay, we're back to normal, so we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna cut back a little bit this year, because you don't want to do that either, so.
So is that, like, have they ever given a bonus to anybody at a school district, or not? That's like, can I, can I, see, my job, we get a bonus, you know, like.
So does all of my kids, they get bonuses, but schools are different.
Especially with the teachers, the certified staff. Because you're going with the union.
Right.
Yeah, the unions are bad.
Shoot the children's foot sometimes.
Get people fired, but they're too, though. Do you want to stick with your motion, Jim?
Well, do we need to have two separate ones, one for Gail and one for the other certified staff?
Just include him?
Since he's going to salary.
We have a new motion, include her, else we'll have to have a second one. So you want to rescind that motion and we'll start over?
Why? I'll rescind it. You can make the one then.
I can make the one. Okay, so what year of salary are we gonna base Gail's off of?
The 2020 was his highest income.
54, 886 times 2.03.
56, 533.
56, 533? Okay, so I'll make a motion that would be of convert Mr. Saleen from hourly to salary using a wage of $56,533 for his annual wage. And then a 3% across-the-board salary increase for all classified staff.
For the year, Jim?
For the year 2021, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's the first and second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, Chance?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yeah? That's out, yes, motion carries 6-0. Discuss and take possible action on adopting the superintendent evaluation form. See if I decade to go on. If you guys brought yours with you. Well, my own opinion, and I'm, I guess, I think the old one we have has too many rating levels, like nine. And the one, the one new one only had four. I didn't think that was enough. I mean, as far as questions go, you can come up with whatever questions you want, it seems like, but I kind of liked the NASB one, I guess, the best, just because it gave you not quite so many rankings, but a few.
And with that one and with the NCSA, the lot of those were measurable. Where you, and with the original one, those are a lot of opinions.
Right.
I mean, how you dress.
And the measurable one, the top, the top area was very hard to meet that criteria. So you almost have to throw out the top one, you're down to three, and you hope you don't have to use one, so you're down to two or three.
I know. To me, it should be more objective and not subjective to somebody's opinion on how they're dressing.
Were you the one on the last one?
No, I was not.
You don't take your money.
You, you think it should be more?
It's hard to make it objective.
I don't want it, I think it should be measurable. Yeah, it should be something that, that's what I'm saying.
You're saying it should be measurable?
It should be able to see that, you know, you, what they're asking for, you should be able to see it. Yes or no?
I'm with Mike on that NASB one, because it standardizes, everybody uses it.
And they'll compile the answers for us, right?
They will, but it's extra fee. I mean, I can see Class A schools, where you've got a lot of people, it's not just their workload, their teachers.
Not necessarily.
But can we use this and, and we don't?
Do it ourselves.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. We shouldn't have to pay for it to be, do you think? No.
We got it right here.
I'll put it on school letterhead. They won't know the difference. Is that thing running?
I mean, we can fill these out, if that's the one we pick, and then.
What is their fee?
If they
If we went with them?
If they compile it for us.
If they compile the information, the results.
Basically, I think you would do it online, each one of us, and then they would compile everything and send us a.
Do we get the information of how he stacks up with the other? I mean, that would be neat to see.
You mean an array?
Yeah, otherwise we're on an island by ourselves.
I can always provide you with an array. I mean, I can give you a 200-page stack of administrative salary.
He's talking about an array of evaluations.
All the evaluations, not, not salary.
They're private, they can't be made public.
They're private. All personnel evaluations are between the evaluator and the evaluator.
So I think we can just each one fill them out, and then we'll go into closed session, and we'll go through them and pile them ourselves. Come up with one, and then you've got your comments, discuss, and, you know. Find that, you know, I'm clearly the only one that has that comment, and everybody else is the other way, well then, you know, you're kind of, you're kind of out on your opinion.
We're gonna change the policy so that the secretary doesn't file the answers together?
Yeah, we'll put a policy, and then we'll do it as a board.
Do it as a board, so you stand by your sort of.
What's your thoughts on this, Chris?
Yes.
You don't hide behind somebody else's.
Any of those?
Chris, I even called him and said, don't do that. She must've been the secretary. That's an awful burden to carry.
I'm sure it was.
Chris, I called him.
Sure it was.
Don't, don't do that. Oh, I like the NASB one. I, I also like the other one. I don't like the one that you were using.
We do have to get it approved by the state, but it's their, it's their evaluation, so they're gonna.
What process that?
Just send it to, send them a copy. That simple.
Okay, so if we change policy, I have two readings, right?
This is a policy, though.
No, this isn't.
Yeah, the only here is a policy. So you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a superintendent evaluation form prepared by NASB for the 2021, 22 school year.
Second.
Second, myself, yes, Jim?
Yes.
Yes, Chance?
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Wyatt? Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Discuss and take possible action on accepting the resignation of Heather Thompson effective at the end of the 2020, 21 school year.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Heather Thompson at the conclusion of the 2020, 21 school year.
I'll second it. First and second, myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Jim?
Yep.
Jim? Motion carries 6-0. Discuss and take possible action on approving an administrative contract for Jen Hudson for the 21, 22 school year. So this contract is basically the same contract as what we've signed in the past, just with a different salary and different.
Exact same language. Uh, the, the title is, is only elementary principal at this point. Any other responsibilities, like if we want to use district instructional coach, or director of professional development, or director of continuous improvement, I mean, that wouldn't change much, quite honestly, if it were in the contract. Because those duties can just be, you know, among administrative team kind of determined, so, so I should say that, that would be different language from Mrs. Thompson's contract.
So that's a question I kind of had for you, I guess, was who's gonna take, because I know Mrs. Thompson had a lot of, a lot of those, who's gonna take those responsibilities?
As administrative team, we will, yeah. And Mrs. Hudson, I expect will, you know, she could potentially assume, you know, some other duties that maybe Mrs. Thompson didn't have. But I, I just wanted to focus on elementary principal.
I have a, I guess my question, I see the, like, the sick days and worked, working days, like, you pay time off, PTO. Like, since she's already been as an employee, does she just lose her PTO that she has?
Her sick days will roll over. She loses her personal time, because we don't have personal days for administrators. Uh, we just have, you know, X number of days, you know, and it's just kind of get the job done. We don't, we don't expect, you know, our administration don't have to keep a calendar, although we could provide one if required of, of days worked. So those personal days that were underneath the, the PPA negotiated agreement, those will go away if she has any left at the end of the year, but I'm betting she won't. But her, her sick bank, her sick bank will just roll over. Yeah, because we don't, we don't pay for unused sick bank for teachers who resign. We had that conversation as a negotiations team. We pay for sick bank if they retire from Plainview, but not unused if they resign. So she shouldn't have to lose all those as a teacher, so she'll start as administrator with what she has at the end of this year.
So there's no marie-ma days either, it's just?
That's just as, as needed, yeah. We don't specify that.
All right, I'll make a motion to operate certified administrative contract for Jen Hudson for the 2021, 2022 school year with a salary of $80,000.
Second. I second it. First and second, any more discussion? Wyatt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yep.
Myself, yes, motion carries 6-0. You can go home and cry, or you can go home and celebrate, I don't know.
Be careful what you ask, boy, it's more than shame.
Do I need to just keep this out, so sign, you've got a different contract, don't you?
Congratulations, Jim. Thank you.
I was just, sorry, I was just asking Dr. Arl about the, if there was a salary negotiation, usually those things are talked about in the public, between the board members. I didn't see anything.
Usually when you just offer that first contract, it's, it's different. They don't, prospective new administrator doesn't come before the board to negotiate their salary. They generally either accept or deny the, the offer. So next year, Ms. Hudson will have an opportunity to negotiate for her raise. And that would be, you know, the discussion.
I just, I thought, yeah, there's usually a discussion among the board members, do accept that number as well. I mean, you're saying that you usually set it.
Yeah.
Is that first initial one?
There, yeah, on the, on the initial one, there's a, a range that I know is, is reasonable based on experience, expertise, you know, fit for the district. So that was the number that, you know, that I determined, so.
Do I need to keep this out, this isn't gonna be official, is it?
What's that?
Per contract, this is the one I did.
Correct, it's not, it's not.
Okay, number 20, discuss and take possible action on the purchase of new basketball.
The official number for that, $7,200 is what it'll end up being. That's new home and ways for boys and girls. That's 15 each, so 60 uniforms total. And like I said, through Luce Sporting Goods is where we'd be going, and then they're all Nike uniforms, so Nike would give us a $3,000 kickback that we can get apparel for coaches with.
What'd you say they're wearing for, is it they're wearing their basketball for track?
Uh, it's junior high.
Junior high.
Yeah, that's why we went with the T-shirt, because I was able to get it.
I remember something about that.
Yeah, the junior high girls were gonna end up wearing their junior high basketball uniforms for track, so we went with the T-shirts. Because track's on the agenda for next year to replace.
They're gonna give us a $3,000 kickback?
They give you coupons, basically, so we can go online to their store and select what we want, and then Luce will personalize it for us.
So you gave rid of all your Under Armour stuff, though?
I don't know. I'm kind of partial to it. Me too. I might have to wear one Nike shirt.
So did you compare Nike to any other company, just out of curiosity?
They're all about the same. So Randy is the guy who came up from Luce, and he brought up samples of Nike, Under Armour, Reebok, Adidas, and there was one other one. And coaches looked at them, players looked at them, so went through, and then they did a couple mockups. And then I gotta submit them to the state to make sure that they're approved, so that way in three years, they don't come back and say, your jerseys aren't legal to play. Just to make sure that all gets approved, and then we can file it and send it. But looking at it, this would be a, a six-year plan, is what it's on rotation anyways. And the jerseys that they're wearing currently for varsity would move and be junior, or JV jerseys, then.
So they have a warm-up, I mean, sweats, is it the whole thing, or just the jersey?
Just the jerseys.
Just the jersey. So, because you have them, warm-ups, correct?
Yeah.
That's continued use. They last longer than the jersey? You keep them longer than the jersey?
They should.
Yeah. I guess traditionally. Two best part of teams that do fundraisers and buy their own warm-ups, so like, you can get personalized ones for 30 or 40 bucks, and if you do that, so.
School might do the bottoms, the kids buy the tops, so what's the name of it?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and purchase the new basketball uniforms for, what'd you say, $7,200?
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? Me, myself, yes, Jim? Wyatt?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Discuss and take possible action on COVID response plan. It seems to have stirred up the people a little bit, so it wasn't meant to, just put on here in case we decide we need to do something.
Yeah, it's been a discussion I had for months, and maybe it should've just been left there. I just left it on there from last month in anticipation of some. left it on there from last month in anticipation of some potential discussion, because sure enough, you know, we had somebody, you know, come up positive, we had some quarantines. So it could have just as well been left in the discussion area where it's been for all the last months.
We didn't know that a week ago, though, and did the agenda with what was gonna, was gonna explode into something more than it did. Unless somebody has some discussion or wants to take some action on it, well.
I have one question. I heard she was asymptomatic, is that correct?
No.
Okay, then that was wrong, that's all I had.
Nope, she got symptoms, that's why she got tested.
I was told that the person that was positive was asymptomatic, I was gonna go, how'd you know then, but he, he said, no, she was symptomatic. I was told wrong.
Yeah.
So we don't need to motion.
Which ain't the first time.
My only.
Information that disseminated from teenagers, no.
I had a couple of parents call me, and both of them said that their kids came home from school saying they were gonna have to go back into wearing mask, and I don't know where they got that from, but it had to be somebody in the school building that told them that.
Could be kid gossip.
Three hundred plus kids in the school building.
A lot of assumptions.
Sometimes kids get things mixed up, just like adults do.
Then there was more people wearing masks after the situation, so, you know, I got some people's attention that probably are concerned about it.
Unfortunately.
What are the, the rules on, like, when somebody gets tested, I guess? Who else gets sent home, like, how close of contact they were, and like, who makes those decisions and what rules apply? I got, I feel like there's probably some questions about.
Center for Disease Control, yeah. Center for Disease Control makes the decisions, hands them down to local health departments who disseminate them to the public, you know, so, you know, the, the rules for close contacts, to my knowledge, you know, has not changed throughout, you know, this whole school year, fifteen minutes of exposure to someone who is unmasked. You know, so that's information from CDC through our health department in O'Neil.
Um, yeah, the reason I ask is I don't think, I'm talking to Brooke, I, I guess his kid got sent home, and he didn't seem like he was very clear on why, or who made those decisions, so I'm sure other parents are worrying about that too, or.
Well, I, I know I can't, yeah, I guess, you know, they're, you have some responsibility to be informed. You know, if you don't wear a mask, you're at risk of being quarantined, if you're close contact with anybody who's.
But you're saying those kids.
That's not true, because even if you're wearing a mask, and this other kid doesn't wear a mask that gets it, you're making the kid with mask go home too, so.
Yeah. Again, you know, we've pushed out this information multiple times, I, you know.
Move on.
On, on how you can be caught up into quarantine, it hasn't changed, and it's the same information that we've been sharing since August.
You're, just so I'm, I'm clear, you're, you're saying that those decisions of who gets sent home from the school comes down from, is it the state or the?
They give us the rules and they ask us, based on these rules, based on these rules, who, who do you determine is a close contact? So our folks had to make some tough decisions, and we said, make sure you're sure. We don't want any, uh, they might have been. If they might have been, they weren't. But who do you know was for fifteen minutes?
Okay. What, all right, is the school admin team that decides who gets sent?
The school staff. The whole school staff determines who would be considered a close contact, you know. So it's tough.
Okay. So you got, yeah, you get information from the teachers and.
Tough, yeah, absolutely.
Let's move on. Do you have any more questions about that?
Sure, no, I, I thought there might have been some confusion there, so thanks.
Okay, principals report.
Activities, we'll go back just one step, but spring sports are underway.
He just wants ice cream.
I talked enough tonight. You got it really you wanted.
I second that motion.
All right, then, principals report. Spring sports are underway. We've hosted a lot here at the end of March, so we actually only have one track, and we've left the host, and we've hosted three already. So on the road again tomorrow, and then we host golf meet here on Saturday, which is the Larry Knocke invite. So haven't got a hold of Coach Knocke yet, but hopefully we're gonna get him out there to hand out trophies and do some of that stuff for us, so should be a fun event. Coaching changes for next year, I will have all of that stuff brought to you next month with who's gonna be coaching what, just to give you an idea. Kim Miller is going to be taking over head volleyball for us this next year, and then I got some shoes to fill with Jen, so there's gonna be some, some carousels taking, taking place, trying to get some spots filled, but we'll get it taken care of, and I'll get you a copy of that stuff. State track's also been moved because they're not doing all four classes at the same time, so state track now is our last two days of school. So that'll be May nineteenth and twentieth.
Seventeen eighteen.
Nineteenth, twentieth.
State track is Wednesday, Thursday?
Yes, Wednesday, Thursday, and then.
I backed it up Tuesday. I'm not very happy about that, but anyway, I don't get to say.
So there you go. But yes, other than that, that's about all that's going on, so.
So you know, you got everything you pretty much wanted tonight, when you start coming asking for money for the golf course, you're in trouble.
All right.
Okay, can I go to principals report now?
Yep, you sure can.
All right, so we'll start with testing as far as N S C A, so our state testing, the high school building is completely done. Elementary, we have one class left to finish science test, and then we will be done. Math growth was started in the elementary building, and I'm super excited because we had both kindergarten classes, second grade, and then one first grade class finished today, and so we've been doing IXL quite a bit, and every single second grader made their expected growth, every single one of them.
Wow.
Uh, which is huge, so Anne and I were just kind of doing cartwheels through, through the testing room today, so.
She presented that tonight.
Yeah, that was amazing. And we weren't really, but we felt like it. And, you know, the growth in the kindergarten and the first grade classes both already, and this is only on one test. I mean, it's, it's been amazing, so thank you again for IXL because it's making a difference there, so.
Did you push out that email or whatever the whole word on that deal?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that was impressive. Oh, yeah, I'm, that's coming up, yeah. Okay, so, um, yeah, so I tweet every Friday about our IXL rock stars, so we have, teachers have, IXL has skill plans that align to RIT scores, which is directly math-related. And so teachers were asked in the winter, when we took math tests, to make a skill plan for every single student. So those that needed interventions, those that needed extension, every single student had their own skill plan. And then a minimum of three times a week, students have been working for ten to fifteen minutes at school. And so we're getting thirty to forty minutes of IXL time at school. And then every Friday, I have, I call out over the intercom rock stars, and they literally get their name on a star, and they get a blow pop. And we have kindergartners who are answering a thousand questions in a week, and sixth graders who are doing the same, so it's just fantastic what we're seeing. And so I had Nebraska Public School Advantage contact me and want to do an article. So during the time that they wanted to do the Zoom meeting, both Crystal and Jeff Souzer were available. So they both came into the Zoom meeting and were part of that with me, so I thought that was pretty awesome, and so that was just published at the end of March. So got some great publicity for the school, and, and now we're finally seeing results from that with our map testing, so pretty fabulous, I thought.
Celebrations coming up. Most of these are after our May board meeting, but wanted to give you a heads up, graduation's gonna be on May fifteenth. We're going to do honors night for academics, that'll be May fourth, and then we're adding in a scholarship night on May ninth, it's a Sunday night. So instead of handing out scholarships at our awards night, we're gonna try and make it a little bit more of a formal event for our seniors, where they have their senior video, and we're able to present them with scholarships, and whoever's giving those scholarships can come in and do a presentation with them. So try and add a little bit more to that, but it also takes away from honors night turning into two hours or three hours, whatever that might be. So hopefully try and divide that up a little bit. We'll see how it goes this year, it might be a flop, we'll see. But we can always adjust in the future. And then the athletic banquet, we're looking at May seventeenth for that to round out the year, so.
Elementary awards, we'll have two separate times during the school day. And we'll have one session for lower elementary and then another for upper elementary, so the lowers don't have to sit through a super long session that they might get really bored in. And then Mrs. B and I did talk today about preschool graduation, so we set a date for that, so that will be May nineteenth. So it's crazy that we're already talking about graduation. Summer school, so I think we have everything set and ready to roll with that. Teachers have identified using test scores and teacher recommendations, we have seventy-eight students that we're going to invite to summer school, and then on the letter we have, we're asking parents to please return it as soon as possible. And because if their student is not interested, then we are going to send an invitation to the next student that's on our list, so we can continue to invite until classes are full. But we have, did you send this to?
I didn't.
Oh, oh.
We've been working on a document just with, you know, some ideas and data and what it might look like for several months, just kind of piecing it together, and here's kind of where we're at now. With details for our summer school. Do you have a more copy?
Yes, I do. And so we have our teachers identified for every class, and we will have title teachers and social education teachers in summer school, which will be fabulous, so all students will be able to be served. We have four parent professionals interested in helping with summer school. So we will definitely be able to offer a very robust warning for those students. I think that's it for summer school, unless you.
High school will have their traditional credit recovery for those students who don't meet the requirements for this year. Core classes are gonna be the main focus. Normally kids that are short in electives, we're able to make that up. But it looks like we'll have about eight to ten students in there for the high school, so. After-school program, we sent out a survey to all the parents just to see what kind of interest there would be for students between the hours of three-thirty to five-thirty at night, and if there would be any interest in utilizing some form of program that we could put together for kids, and there's about fifty-one kids that would utilize that, is the feedback that we got from parents. General consensus, I think there was two out of the fifty-one that wanted to pick their kids up at six, the rest were fine with five-thirty. But that being a big number, I, I see it as something is, we should look into and see if it's some need that we can meet. Biggest issues we're gonna have is people to run it, and, and a location to house it, because that's gonna be prime cleaning time for our custodian group. So it's gonna be hard to keep those kids in the building here, but the other thing would be if we're expecting, you know, if we open it up to paras or whatnot, then it becomes an issue that we're gonna be working more than forty hours a week as well with that. So those are gonna be the two bridges that we have to cross, and I know I've talked with Jeremy a little bit about some things. We've been bouncing ideas off each other, so if you guys have any great ideas of how to, of what we can do, or how to go about this, or anything that I can look on, I'm all ears when it comes to that, so.
Some IXL updates, just as a district, we have right now answered eight-hundred-seventeen-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-seven questions. And we have twenty-three teachers who are highly engaged on IXL, so they're using the analytics and going in and digging into the data that their students are doing. So that's great. As a district, we've mastered eight-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-nine skills, so.
I put changes on there. There's a couple of changes I wanted to make, I wanted to make you guys aware of. Next month, I wanted to bring a random drug testing policy forward to see if we could get that approved for anybody who's involved in extracurricular activities. So I mean, if you have more questions about it, I've been doing some research, trying to find policies, what other schools are doing, how they're going about doing it, if they're doing it in-house, clinics, costs, all that stuff, so I have a bunch of information, but it's something that I think's becoming more pertinent to our generations that are coming through right now, so it's just something that I want to try and get out in front of and be proactive about. The other thing that I was looking at is open campus. We've had some issues with open campuses this year, and it's something I'd like to go away from. And having kids eat lunch here, and after listening to Linda talk about having to figure out how many lunches to make and whatnot, it makes our job a lot easier, because we know all of our kids are gonna be here. But also, there's a lot of logistics with kids out in town, and if something were to happen during that time, we can't tell you where they're at. So those are a couple of changes that I was looking at, so if you have more questions about that or whatnot, or if you get feedback, let me know.
We did start our second two schools, one book, which Mr. Schmidt House is very excited about. So we started The World According to Humphrey today, and that was sent home with students either Friday or today. There are recordings available on Plainview Public Schools homepage, Twitter, and Facebook, so students have access to it if parents can't read with them. And so again, if you know anyone from Plainview Pull It or Michael Foods, their fifteen-hundred-dollar donation at the beginning of the school year made that completely possible for our students and for the students at Zion. So we did make sure that we gave them books this time as well.
Did you put that in a paper, that donation?
I did at the beginning of the year when we did the first, yep. And then on the video today, I made sure that I gave them another shout-out there too. Oh, me again. Registration numbers, so our preschool numbers did go up. So when we had our preschool registration, we had several additional families come in, so preschool, we are at twenty-one for next year, and kindergarten, we're at twenty-six. So yeah, both classes are looking fabulous. And that is it.
One, one question. How many students are in the elementary school right now?
Two oh two.
Two hundred two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So what, or why did we get away from putting in the paper like honors and high honors students and stuff, you know, just?
Putting in the paper?
Yeah, I mean, it used to be in the paper every, like, semester or whatever, the high honors students and the.
They had their pictures.
Had their picture.
Every quarter, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think every quarter.
We gotta take a look out for lunch, get that going again.
And is there a reason why you do against it, or?
I sent the honor rolls into the paper, so what to publish exactly, I didn't, I just sent them a list of students that were high honors and.
And I could have missed it if it were pictures, I just.
Yeah, yeah, if there's pictures, you don't miss it. If it's a list of names, you might, so, you know.
I'm not saying we need pictures, you know, I just, I, I haven't seen it for a long time, but maybe it's been there. Okay, principals report. Yeah, I think, Dr. Harrell, you brought this up a little bit earlier, but I was kind of wondering on the school goal, the opting out thing that we were gonna look at, set up a committee for. I know next year, we've got some, some students in our district that are coming out of parochial schools that are a little bit on the fence line, maybe where they're gonna go, and I just think it would be a good thing to throw the welcome mat out to those people, and let them know they're welcome, you know, in some way, shape, or form, that we'd love to have their kids come here. And I think now's the time to be doing that. I mean, I don't know when they have to make that decision where their kids are gonna go, but they're gonna be doing it pretty soon. And I, I just would like to get on this, I guess, a little bit before, before those decisions have been made by those people. So I'm not, I'm not gonna name any names of who they are, but we all know some people that are in that situation, they haven't made their mind up yet, so. that are in that situation, haven't made their mind up yet, so, but, so I guess I'd like to see that then kinda take off and get ice to meet, and come up with something on that, so, um, basically all I have. Superintendent's report.
Okay. So, uh, I guess an update on, uh, stat vac, vaccination, about half of our teachers received full vaccination, minus one, who received the first dose, what, and didn't want the second, uh, which is fine, it's a personal decision, about ten of our classified staff, that's through the clinics that were held at Zion, if they went off to another satellite clinic to receive a vaccination, I, I just am, you know, not aware, um, but that's their personal decision, I guess. We did host a vaccination clinic here today, um, uh, I wasn't in the building during that time to see the numbers that, that came into our building to receive the vaccination, but I guess we're happy to help the health department if we can. Uh, so, when they called to ask if they could use our facility, I said, sure. Um, we are currently advertising for a sixth-grade teacher, uh, I have, uh, eight apps, I have eight apps at this time, so, we'll kinda see where I, I share with every app, at the end of this week, we'll kinda see where we're at, try to make a, uh, then we'll start to set up an opportunity for, for probably four to come and visit, so, uh, myself and, and Mrs. Hudson, and Mr. Schmidt, and a group of elementary teachers may be involved in, in that. Um, that's done different from district to district, sometimes it's building principal to, you know, and sometimes the whole administrative team is part of it, sometimes you might have staff members of that building, uh, so that'll be determined here pretty quick. Uh, we'll also be advertising for a fourth-grade teacher, uh, by the first of tomorrow, so some of those folks might be considered for either of those that have already come in, so obviously just looking for the best fit, uh, you know, for, for our needs. Uh, we've already discussed quite a bit about, uh, S3 money, um, uh, one thing that's not on here that I'm evaluating, and I've talked about this a couple months, are copy machines, uh, we pay quite a bit for, uh, overages and for service charges, cause our machines are old. They still do a pretty good job of pumping out copies, uh, but because they're so old, we pay quite a bit on, uh, service charges and overages. We're maybe in a position to purchase three new machines and have those numbers go way down, uh, I'll have information for you next month, uh, comparatively, so, uh, on that. Uh, there are a number of bills that I'm watching going through the unicameral right now, um, I don't pay a whole lot of attention until they get some legs, and how they might affect us. There's a few, a few, a few more unfunded mandates, mandatory teacher trainings that might come out, like seizure training and sex, recognizing sex abuse training, we already have mandatory suicide training, teen dating, violence, a lot of things that you wouldn't have guessed a generation or more ago, there's potentially a couple more, uh, that are being added to that, uh, and then there's always something, always discussions about property tax relief, and how that would affect, uh, school financing, we're a non-equalized district, but it does affect us, obviously, because, uh, you know, property taxes is the way, biggest piece of the pie that, you know, supports the expenses of the school, uh, so, uh, there's that that always has our attention, too. Um, you know, among a few other things, um, I don't know how much you follow the unicameral or any of that business, but I'd be happy to, if you, something ever comes up, you just, you know, I can check into it, and I can find out just how strong, you know, uh, momentum this particular bill might have, and we can discuss it, you know, uh, here at, certainly at, uh, at your request. Uh, one of the things you may hear about is new health standards, which, uh, you know, has to do potentially with, and people are throwing LGBTQ out there and requirement, the school districts will not be mandated to adopt these standards, that's the primary thing that you need to know. This is not gonna be something imposed upon school districts, if it passes, you'll have the option to evaluate it and consider it, uh, as, as part of our curriculum, okay? It's not gonna be imposed on school districts, so if you, there's, that one's receiving a little, a lot of talk because it's so controversial. Um, so, just so you know, if you hear about the health standards, the controversial health standards, uh, they, they would, school districts would have some local control on determining if they adopt those as part of their curriculum, okay? Uh, that, there's just the usual enrollment summary and meeting out of district, vacation signals, and that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Is it good? Meeting adjourned.
Got a lot of conversation.